JJ, if you want to give me the signal when we're ready to begin, that would be great. But again, I'm not getting any sound.
I gotta stop my share.
I can hear you now.
All right, Chair Ulrich?
Yes.
You can begin.
All right. Well, we're going to convene the County Board for February 2nd, 2021. If you'd arise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We're on to item two, which would be amendments to the agenda. I don't believe we have any. Is that correct? Okay, well, hearing none, we'll move on to item three, which is approve the minutes of our January 19th, 2021 County Board meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second, and I give a correction to JJ just on the Scott County, when you guys attended some meetings, and just had some wording that was probably not right, so.
Okay.
It's a small change.
We have a motion and a second and changes. On the attendance, Lisa Brodsky is on the same line as someone else, but then her title isn't there. So if we can just correct that, it's kind of a reoccurring thing, I think, so let's fix that, too.
Okay, Commissioner.
Okay, JJ, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Wakey, Mr. Brokey?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Beard?
Aye.
Commissioner Beard?
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich?
Aye. Motion carries. We're on to item four, which would be recognition of interested citizens. This is limited to items that are not on the agenda, and five minutes per person, per subject. And speakers are to approach the microphone for the benefit of viewers at home and interested citizens. Do we have anybody in the room or online that wants to speak? Are we aware of anybody?
Mr. Chairman, the mayor is here from Prior Lake, but he wants to address one of the items on the consent agenda. So when you read the consent agenda, I think at that point, he could walk up then and just address his concern.
All right, we'll do that. Okay, we're on to item five, 5.1. This is the consent agenda. These are deemed as non-controversial and generally passes one motion. 5.1 is approve the request for rezoning of 65.6 acres from Transition Reserve District TR to Transition Reserve Cluster District TRC, Scott Howard applicant and property owner in Section 19 of Spring Lake Township. 5.2 is approve the renewal application for an annual precious metal license for pawn exchange in Shakopee for 2021. 5.3 is adopt resolution 2021-20, authorizing entering a contract number 1045815 with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for federal participation in advanced construction for the county highway 42 pavement rehabilitation project in the city of Savage. 5.4 is approve the appointment and reappointment of citizen to advisory committees. 5.5, adopt resolution number 2021-25, supporting legislative legislation authorizing infrastructure development fees. 5.6 is approve payroll processing of personnel actions. 5.7 is adopt resolution 2021-8, authorizing a budget amendment and an amendment to the agreement with TDAK for engineering consultant services for the county highway eight and trunk highway 13, roundabout in Spring Lake and Cedar Lake Townships. 5.8 is to adopt resolution 2021-21, approving entering into a grant agreement with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for the Federal Clean Water Act and create Section 319, nine elements plan grant phase one. 5.9 is adopt resolution 2021-19, approving contract extension for attachment one to the master agreement with Canvas Health, Inc., to provide after-hours social service response. And 5.10 is to adopt resolution 2021-22, approving entering a grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Health via the Metropolitan Emergency Services Board for 9/11 service equipment and amend the budget to accept the grant funds. That's our consent agenda. We'll take that comment in the discussion portion after we have a motion and a second. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second and discussion. Now, this is where we'll receive the comment that the mayor, I don't want to come forward.
Mr. Commissioner and Board, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you, especially under an exception in my desire to thank you, quite honestly, for your passage of consent item 5.5. You know, it is an exception, as I learned through this process, to pass a resolution that had previously even passed, as I learned from civics. Resolutions never sunset. They can only be overturned or modified. And yet, we had an election last year that brought with it two new mayors for cities here in the city of Prior Lake. Of course, we now have a new city in Scott County with Credit River now being a city. We also have four new state legislators in Scott County. Therefore, we felt it important to essentially bring forward a resolution. But I'd also like to quickly say how far we've come to, you know, it was two years ago that we started on this legislative journey to protect our taxpayers, our property taxpayers. But right now, if fees for new development is not levied, from which they came with the developers, a cost is a cost. The absence of a fee merely places that cost on existing taxpayers. And our action, our legislative request, is to change statutory authority to make sure that those fees reside where they belong, which is on that growth. It was your board's support, along with every city in 2019, as well as four townships, that essentially created a compelling sense of urgency that put bills in the hotbed in 19. As you may or may not be aware, we had two hearings in the House, and we did not move forward at all in the Senate. So where are we today? Well, I'm pleased to share with you, we did communicate with our legislators that we felt we had solid support. So already, we have a Senate bill in place that has five co-authors on it, with the lead author being Senator Eric Pratt. But we also have a new state Senator Port, who's also signed on as a co-author. We have a new Senator from Lakeville, also Senator Duckworth, who has signed on to that piece of legislation, as well as Senator Hoffman, who signed on last year, and finally Senator Jazinski in Rochester. So already, on the Senate side, five authors, those authors chair important committees through which this bill shall pass. Also in the House, we have a bill in play, and the lead author is Housing Committee Chair and long-serving Representative Sandy Mason. So with Representative Mason and Representative Albright, I'm here to tell you that the work that was begun two years ago has never been stronger. That I feel confident that we're going to have those discussions, build the collaboration, and it started right here with the county's support. So I can't, thank you for making a difference. Indeed, it is with those taxpayers that I know that we stand united, and it's going to make a difference. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, for your comments, and thank you for your good work as a mayor, for your sitting. I appreciate all that you do. Okay, we have the consent agenda before us. We have a motion and a second, and now it's time to take the roll.
Commissioner Wakey, Mr. Brokey?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Beard?
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich?
Aye. Motion carries. We're on to item 6.1, which is to receive a COVID-19 update. Good morning, Lisa.
Morning, Commissioner Ulrich and Commissioners. I am or was expecting Dr. Wilcox this morning. Also, I'm not sure if he's on the line. And hearing nothing, I will say no, he is not able to join us today. He is actually running a clinic over at the jail, but he may join us in a little bit. Well, thank you for inviting me to do another COVID-19 update. Last time I was here in January, a lot has changed since then. Next slide. This is from 127, so just to give you a picture of what's going on in the state. To date, in Minnesota, well, actually to 127, about 345,000 people have had their, at least one dose of vaccination, and about, almost 100,000 people have had both doses. Most of these are those that are connected with the hospital and received the initial shipment of Pfizer frozen vaccine. In Scott County, approximately 7,000 people have had, have started their vaccines, and that's about 4.9% of the population. The state has set a goal for us as far as the turnaround for the vaccine. The long goal is the seven days, so by the day, from the time we receive the vaccine, that it's out within seven days. Our targets, we're within that target in Scott County. And the ideal goal is to have it turned around within three days. The difficulty for us in Scott County is we usually find out Friday afternoon how much vaccine we're getting for the next week. We have been hesitant to schedule a clinic prior to actually knowing that number and having vaccine on hand. Sometimes it comes on Tuesday, sometimes it comes on Wednesday. So we are struggling a little bit with that to figure out what, find that sweet spot. We don't want to actually have to cancel people if the vaccine doesn't come in. But, and we really would like to try and give people a few days' notice as far as when the vaccine clinics are going to be. But typically, we're notified Friday afternoon. It still changes. Last week, our allocation was 1,100. This week, it's 800, and I was able to secure an additional 100. So a little bit difficult in planning. A phone call with the state this morning. They are really trying to do some long-term forecasting and hoping that they'll give us at least two weeks' notice, which would be so much better than what's happening now. But be assured that as soon as we do receive that vaccine, we're scheduling the clinic and we're getting it out. We knew on Friday afternoon, late in the afternoon, how many vaccines we were going to get for next week. After quick calculations for second doses, we were able to open up a 600-person clinic for 65-plus on Friday. It filled within two hours, and we now have probably three times as many people on the waitlist. I did contact the state of Minnesota this morning also to see if, by any chance, they had any extra vaccine lying around. They do not, unfortunately, but we are really still trying to maximize those opportunities. And if we do get another 100 doses, possibly, we will open it up to the first 100 people on the waitlist. Next slide. Next. So as of Friday, in total, we've received 3,600 vaccines. Geratome has received 300 of those on our behalf for group homes. But as of Friday at 7:00 PM, we have done almost 3,000 vaccinations. So utilizing almost all of our doses, and we held back. We have 475 scheduled for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and we held back some for those. Those were second doses for EMS and healthcare workers, just to make sure that we have enough vaccine. The other piece of that is we have to also receive ancillary supplies from the state. Last week, when we received 1,100 doses, we only received 100 ancillary supplies, which also puts a little bit of a wrinkle in our planning. But we do have enough for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then our Friday's clinic, we know that we're getting the additional doses on Tuesday. Next click.
Lisa, clarify, what is ancillary supply?
So along with the actual vaccination, the vaccine, we also receive alcohol pads, cotton balls, the needles, and other pieces of supplies that we need to, just in order to distribute the vaccines.
Thank you.
We do have a small cache of syringes, which would be the most important. We have a small cache of extra supplies. Syringes are very difficult to get right now. There's a shortage on the type that we own, that we purchase usually for these. And so those ancillary supplies are quite critical. So just a little bit of description of those, almost 3,000 vaccines. This was done in 69 different locations. Next click. Excellent. Thank you. That includes 1,015 healthcare workers. Click. Sorry, I don't have a button here. We did 386 individuals that were in group homes in Scott County. Next click. And 238 EMS. Next slide. Thank you.
Just a question at this point here. You've done a tremendous job in a lot of 69 locations. That's amazing. And I'm sure it's, the work is exhausting and overwhelming, and you're in, sometimes, probably exasperating situations with uncertainty with what you're getting and so forth. You know, over the years in the past, I remember us planning for pandemic and having what we would call a mass distribution site. Do you wonder if we'll ever get there? Because obviously, you can't have a mass distribution unless you have all the, a mass amount of doses and ancillary supplies. Comment on that mass clinic or vaccination setup. Would you think we'll ever get there?
Thanks to the question, Commissioner Ulrich. We are actually there right now. Our two clinics we have right now, one is in New Prague, the other one is in Shakopee. These are the ones that we're currently doing. Those 69 locations were, you know, like, actual locations and where people can't really come to a mass dispensing site. So are the pretty high-risk populations. Our clinic in Shakopee, we can probably do the way we're set up now in that four-hour timeframe. We do about 600 to 800 vaccinations. Once we have more quantity, we can ramp that up to 2,500. So we are putting processes in place right now that are, will be very easy to tweak and change as needed as vaccine comes in. We can make them longer. I'll be having a conversation with Canterbury later to see if we can use part of their hallway for a waiting area. This will also look a lot different in the summertime, where people can actually wait outside under a tent, maybe, or a canopy. So our plan right now, we technically are doing mass vaccinations when we bring in 600 to 800 people at a time, but we should be able to ramp up to a lot more.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just asked that for clarification to help me to understand. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Oh, hi, Mr. Chair, Lisa, thank you. This is great. I think Scott County Public Health has, you know, just done amazing work over the past few weeks, and also, coupled with that is the thousands of phone calls you're getting. Do you have any data on other numbers of vaccinations that have occurred in Scott County by healthcare providers and others, because this is what Scott County has done? Do you have numbers on other vaccinations happening with our population here?
I could get those numbers. The total in Scott County so far is about 7,000, and public health has done about 3,000 of those. So the rest, really, were done at the hospital, as far as I know. Eventually, other clinics and pharmacies will have doses, as far as I know right now. They don't unless they've signed up to be a provider. And we do have 20 different locations in the county that have signed up to be a provider. I don't know if those have actually received any quantities of vaccination, but I could find out. I do know that SMSC, Shakopee, Mudwakan and Sioux Community is doing vaccinations as well. So I will certainly be able to try and pull those details for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Lisa, so how many total have been in Scott County so far? About 4,000 total?
I would have to go back. Can you go back to the first slide, please?
I'm just, because it says you've received 3,600 vaccinations to date. So that's about 1,800 people, because they each have to have two, right?
No, these are, so, two parts to your question. 7,000 people have actually started the vaccine, and you can proceed to the next, to where we just were. And the 2,920 includes both, the first and second dose.
So they have both?
Yep. As of, as of last, or as of Friday, only 21 of those are second doses, because we are now at that 28-day period. So we are, we just are starting our second doses now. So we did our community vaccinators, 21 doses, and then our EMS are the 475 that are getting their second doses this week.
Okay, because I had thought Dr. Wilcox, late last fall, I don't know if it was October, November, when he gave a report here with you, I thought he said we'd be almost fully vaccinated by April or so of this spring. Is that, because I'm mathing it out and thinking, well, if we're only getting so many per whatever, this is going to take us a year and a half to three years to get through Scott County. Am I wrong?
You are not wrong, Commissioner Wolf. If we, if they maintain, I mean, as of two weeks ago, we were only getting 300 doses, which is very problematic. As the supply increases, we will continue to get more. I believe about 50% of the population will likely take vaccines, probably higher in the senior population. Doing the math, that will take us, the exact calculation probably that you just did. But I believe we'll be getting, you know, I think we'll reach the 2,000, the 5,000, hopefully within the next month or so. But, you know, we're at the whim of the state and the feds. As Minnesota in total right now, I think it's only getting about 70,000 doses for the entire state.
No, I have a question, and I'm guessing you probably can't answer this, but maybe Dr. Wilcox can, but maybe he can't either. What is going to happen when the Johnson &amp; Johnson comes online that's 65% effective? I mean, don't you wonder who's going to want that shot versus Moderna or Pfizer?
Yeah, and it's another really good question, Commissioner Ulrich. We don't know. You know, 65% is better than zero protection. So if there is a short supply in Moderna, or it's hard to get, there could be quite a few people that take that shot and not come for the Moderna shot. At this time, our plan is to only, in public health, is to only do the Moderna shot. We don't have the capacity to store the Pfizer vaccine, because you needed a very expensive deep freeze. And we, at this time, don't really have any plans to do the other vaccine. So we will continue on our Moderna path and watch the numbers. We'll get reports on what type, you know, who's vaccinated in the county, and it'll be very interesting when it comes out.
Can I jump in here a little bit? You know, I certainly agree. I think when Johnson &amp; Johnson's product becomes available, it's going to open up additional opportunities to vaccinate people within our county. That's a one-shot vaccine. There's no booster that's recommended for that. Bottom line is, the effectiveness of Johnson &amp; Johnson, they suggest about 64%. That's kind of what the influenza vaccine provides each year. And the thought is, they have not done research to determine, say, down the line, if a second booster of the Johnson &amp; Johnson product is administered. The thinking is, I believe, that then, as far as infectivity goes and immune response, it achieves the same level as the Pfizer and the Moderna product would achieve. So what we're telling, what I'm telling my patients is, whatever vaccine becomes available to you soonest, get it. Get the vaccine and get the ball rolling towards developing a proper immune response for you. Johnson &amp; Johnson, when it comes on the market, is going to have additional supplies for our vaccinators to do their thing and do their work within our county.
Dr. Wilcox, and isn't the reading on that one also that minimal hospitalizations and no deaths? And that's the marker that they're really looking at with that, correct, besides the fact you become immunized?
That's exactly right. All of these vaccines prevent illnesses that lead to hospitalization and intensive care usage. So any of these vaccines, when you administer them, within a two-week period of time, will start affording immunity and allow these fine people then who have gotten them, it'll hopefully prevent them from being in the hospital and needing an intensive care unit type of setting.
Well, thank you. And I think if it does become available, we'll need strong messaging on the things that you've said.
I agree. I think educating our population as to the benefits of each one of these vaccines is critical. There's a lot of information on the internet that is false. It's pseudoscience, and I think we need to recurrently bring proper information to our citizens about the benefits of this vaccine and the opportunity they need to jump on to get it sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
That was a very good segue to our next slide, I believe. So public information, this is critical. If we thought H1N1 had a lot of confusing messages, this is probably four times worse. Different vaccines, things are changing, one shot, two shots. Honestly, one shot instead of two would really address some of the level of complexity in this planning, because we have to plan for people coming back in 30 days. But public information has been, well, it is critical, and we have been getting hundreds of phone calls daily, hundreds of emails, hundreds of phone calls daily. And so we have put, worked with the EOC and put in several things in place, starting with a new COVID hotline phone number. People can call this number directly. The number is 952-818-3730. We have live bodies answering those phones. Right now, we have an English speaker, a Somali speaker, actually, two English speakers and a Somali and a Spanish speaker, and are fielding phone calls. Most of the questions are, how can I get my vaccine? When's going to be my turn? Who are you vaccinating now? Second-dose questions. So because of that, we are also developing some frequently asked questions lists that will be provided to our staff that are answering those calls. They can also email directly. We have a new COVID email. So if you have a question about that, covid@co.scott.mn.us. That also goes directly to multiple different staff people who will take turns answering those questions. Our intake line has been ringing off the hook. I think we had 128 emails, messages on Monday morning that we tried to respond to. But now, when they call the general public health intake line, they can press nine for a pre-recorded message, and that message tells them exactly who we're vaccinating now and a variety of other answers that are frequently asked, what type of vaccine, how to find out information about our upcoming clinics, which is on our next slide.
You know, that frequently asked questions thing, that would be good. And I don't think we can err on putting out that information too much on Facebook, all the different social media sites. I mean, you know, obviously, we've been told what our best practice is now before getting vaccinated. People probably wondering, you know, okay, I'm vaccinated. What are best practices for me now? Should I still wear a mask? Is it safe to travel in an airplane? You know, what's wise, what's the best practices, you know, so those are important questions.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have updated our webpage. There is a link directly to this page on the main landing page for Scott County, and it really goes through who's eligible, who we're vaccinating right now. When you go to our page, you can scroll down, and if we do have a clinic, it will be at the bottom with that link after you do like a short screen, "Am I eligible?" The screen is not yet up, but it does provide information and the link to our current clinic in addition to a whole frequently asked questions section and a phone number to call. Right now, this is very web, and it's also being translated. Right now, it's very internet-heavy, web-based, but that standard phone number will be able to, if you call that, if you can't register online, the system to register is online, but we will have live people who can actually register you for, they can register you in, for an appointment, if there's one available, by just calling. So that will hopefully eliminate any barriers, particularly for our senior population that might not be so technological savvy or online. And this is the direct link to our webpage, but also on our main landing page, there is a link directly to this page.
Mr. Chair and Lisa, I really appreciate that phone option and think we need to promote that. At Friday afternoon, I spent two half-hour sessions on the phone with senior citizens in Scott County who were trying to do this on their iPad. So they had iPads and they had internet, and it still took a long time because they pushed wrong buttons, and it was very difficult. So obviously, you don't have the staff to spend a half hour per person, so I do appreciate that phone line. And then, I guess, and maybe you're going to speak to this, but... to this, but plans for reaching out to those seniors, I'm especially thinking about the rural isolated seniors who maybe aren't getting this information. Do we, are we connecting with CAP, churches? How are we going to try and track down those folks? Because many of them have been quite isolated in the last year and aren't getting good information.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Bruckey. Right now, what we've been doing is reaching out through a variety of different sources. The skilled nursing, quite a few of the seniors got done when we did skilled nursing and independent living and the assisted living. Those predominantly, by the majority, were a lot of the seniors. We are now reaching out through the senior apartments and have connected and got email addresses for all of the apartment managers that are specific for seniors. And so we're doing that. We will also be sanitizing our clinics and publishing the phone number and webpage through the scene, through paper, paper format. And also, once we have some more information, we'll be sending flyers out to the faith-based organizations. That, that isolated group is probably the most difficult to reach. The other flip side of that is if they're very isolated, socially distant from everybody, they're also low risk. But they also may be connected with maybe their medical provider. So lots of messages is going out. We are starting a social media campaign shortly to help your senior neighbor get registered. So we'll be asking people in the community to, if you know somebody that's socially isolated that might not, you know, that's a senior that might not be able to register for vaccine, please reach out and assist them. It really is trying to really reach them any way we possibly can.
I really like that. Thank you. And just one more suggestion would be maybe to link up with CAP's short program. And they do have some mobile meals delivery. I know in New Prague for sure and maybe Bell Plain. So they might have some lists of other isolated seniors. Again, I know we're not ready for them yet, but when it's time. So thank you.
Thanks. We also are working with the home care services who are able to get vaccines, and we will go back to them to assist them in connecting their clients with us.
One other resource that I had mentioned also, Lisa, was the EMS providers within our communities who frequently have a really good feel for folks who may be in a setting of isolation and elderly and disabled. Getting feedback from them is a very positive thing also in handling this kind of need in all of our communities as well.
Dr. Wilcox, did you want to spend a few more minutes? Just, you had also wanted to talk a little bit about how you think it's going and...
Yeah, I tell you what, folks, I am, I am very impressed with how well, honestly, this program is moving along within our, within our county. I had the unique opportunity at New Prague's clinic last week to spend several hours there just getting a feel for how things were moving and how things were developing relative to how this vaccine was being administered. Extremely impressed. We had really excellent people doing the screening. We had excellent administrative staff who had to kind of roll with the punches a bit to log in patients who presented without preregistration and all of that. And then once they got through the administrative piece, just how efficient it was to have our folks move through the various vaccination stations. We had six to eight stations set up. We had two nurses who drew up the vaccines. That's all they did. They did not waste any of the product. And they handed off these syringes then to the vaccinators. So that's all the vaccinators had to do was inject the arm of the patient as they moved through. And then after the patient completed that, they went to an area and were observed for a period of 15 minutes. It was extremely efficient. We got over 500 people vaccinated in a very short period of time. And to be sure, there were some bumps initially in getting folks registered and so on. But we got through that and the efficiency was, was top-notch. Wanted to give a shout out also to Lisa and to other folks within our public health department. I've been getting calls from various other counties. And most recently, I got a call last evening from a representative from the western part of Hennepin County. Her name's Kristen Robbins, who had heard about the efficiency of the program we have occurring in Scott County. And she was wondering how they might move ahead in their part of Hennepin County to develop a program similar to ours. So I had a nice opportunity to chat with her about what we're doing out this way, gave her some resource people that they could perhaps connect with to develop a program of that type in their area. And Lisa was right on the top of the list that she could contact as well. So very impressive, I think, the way our county has proactively moved ahead on this. And we continue to do some really excellent things, short and long term, to head off this pandemic.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. I also want to point out that the community paramedics that we are using through Dr. Wilcox's group have been instrumental in getting shots done. And we have about 20, 22 community paramedics that we're able to call on, fill in those spaces for staff. So our, you know, we still have like the family home visiting, and we still have our other duties, our ship and our child and teen checkup. So it really has not only provided us with a cadre of vaccinators, but it also allows for some continuity of operations in our stand, you know, in our regular programs. The other piece too is now that we have figured out really the flow, we've done these before, a lot of these. The trick, the tricky piece in this that's kind of throws the wrench in the planning is that 15 minutes after, people still need to do that six-foot social distancing and finding a safe way to do that. And how many people can we push through these spaces while still maintaining the six-foot social distancing in line and after? We now, we think we have it, you know, this has been a continuous quality improvement process and little tweaks here, little tweaks there. Bottom line, we're still getting people vaccinated. But we are now looking at expanding some of our staffing. We are bringing in some Medical Reserve Corps volunteers and some other volunteers to fill some of those roles. And we're working through the EOC to provide some additional options such as outdoor check-in in the parking lot so people can sit in their cars. The EOC and Public Works and will be helping us with traffic flow. Trust me, you don't want public health folks working on traffic flow. And working with law enforcement to provide some of that security in case, in case of need. It really has been helpful to have those people that we can push those things off to where we don't have the expertise. Just get our people inside the door and we'll vaccinate them. So it has really been kind of a countywide effort, and the support has been greatly appreciated. Next slide. So my last slide is just for additional questions that you might have.
Any questions, anybody?
Mr. Chair, Lisa, when do you think this whole thing is going to be over with and done?
Thank you, Commissioner Wolf. If I, if I had a magic eight ball, it would say, please ask your question again.
I can buy one at a garage sale for a dime.
It would say, ask again later, like maybe in a year.
Well, Dr. Wilcox, maybe you could comment, because one of the things I'm reading is that it's, it's a race to get people vaccinated, not only to protect them, but to also stop the mutation, the opportunity for this virus to mutate. And you have variants, and we don't want a variant that is not, the vaccine's not effective again, so.
No, that's great. Yeah, that's, that's a great point, Commissioner. Viruses mutate on a regular basis. That happens every year with the influenza virus as well. And the bottom line is, if you can get our maximum immunity in place for our population, 70%, 80%, it's going to curtail then the mutation issues that are presenting themselves right now. As it stands right now, the three mutant strains are, the vaccines are effective in killing those viruses. Down the line, however, this may not be the case. So there is this need then for a full court press, get all of our people vaccinated as quickly as possible to prevent further spread of a virus that may mutate down the line that does not respond appropriately, the vaccines we have in place. Commissioner Wolf, I think you've mentioned that you're wondering when this is all going to end. Patients ask me that not uncommonly. What I suggest to them is this. I think when it comes to wearing a mask and the social distancing and so on, I think that that may, may end by late summer or early fall. That's assuming that we get everyone vaccinated appropriately with the vaccines that are being produced and shipped to us vigorously now. And I believe that'll be the timeframe in which wearing masks may not be necessary any longer.
And this is Lisa. I apologize. My computer every once in a while shuts off randomly. I do apologize for that. I, Dr. Wilcox is a lot more optimistic than I am. I would predict that this is going to last through the, the rest of the year.
Yep. Well, obviously, we don't know with any certainty. So it's the best guess at this point, or best educated guess, highly educated guess by Dr. Wilcox and you, Lisa. Again, we can't thank you enough. We can't express our appreciation strongly enough. I mean, we know that you're doing heroic work and maximum effort and in tough situation, tough dynamics. And, and so we, we thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add to that, that the sense of calm in that vaccination clinic and people going through was really, and the appreciation, they had those 730 people that they moved through there on Thursday, and the optimism that I heard of, we can go see our grandkids pretty soon, that, thank you, Scott County, for getting this out for us so quickly and so rapidly. The nurses, having dealt with testing clinics, you know, for swabbing, starting last summer, up to now vaccinating, and the amount of people they have seen and moved through this process and the planning, and their determination and their optimism and their belief in public service to help people, it just, it just shown. It, you could see it last Thursday. And it is a continuous quality improvement. I know we've heard things and people have brought things up. But part of it was the public. It was forwarding things that shouldn't have been forwarded and then having to deal with that. And so when the public follows the rules and do what they're asked to, it really helps. And that optimism, though, from the folks that were in line and moving through there and their thankfulness, I, it's, those staff have really done really, really good things and have been working really hard since this whole testing to the vaccinating has taken place, and I believe will continue to get better. But we are ahead, as Dr. Wilcox mentioned, on other counties, just in my updates, for getting to the 65s and the coordination we've had with other players in the county. And all of those staff that are doing the planning, the nurses, the logistics people, Lisa and other folks should be commended for the way it's rolled out.
Any other comments or questions from anybody?
Mr. Chair, I'll just pass on some words from my young adult daughter. One of my children and her boyfriend just finished a couple weeks of, of having COVID. She received it at school. She's a graduate student. And she's been very careful. And a few days ago, or probably a week ago, when she was still sick, she said, you know, Mom, I was so worried about spreading it. That's why I was so careful. I never thought it would be so bad to have it. So even as a young, healthy adult, her, you know, just her symptoms and then being isolated was, was really tough. And she's still, you know, she's kind of, she got broke loose, I guess, yesterday, based on, on her symptoms and the length of time. And she said, yeah, every, everything kind of tastes gross. I can't smell. And, and it was just a surprise to her as being so, so young that it, she got it so hard. When her point in being careful was she didn't want to spread it. She's like, I didn't even think about it. I don't want to get it. I just, and so it's, it hits everybody differently. And, and the sooner we get these vaccines out, the better. So thanks, Lisa, and your staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, as always, feel free to email me if you have any questions. I am trying to get back to everybody the same day. It might be a few hour delay, but also I'm available by cellphone if it's urgent. So thank you very much.
Take care, folks. Stay safe.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. We're on to item 6.2, which is to receive an update on CARES-RHO broadband deployment. Is that Perry? You going to present on that? Who's presenting?
She's pulling up your presentation. Then JJ will get out of your way.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and present and give an update on the CARES-RHO broadband deployment. Of course, it's a patent of mine and something I was excited to be a part of. I was going to remark to the county attorney that I'm wearing the choose-not-to-use face mask, and he walked out on me. So can I advance these on my own?
Yes.
Okay. So as, as the board will recall, the project started last March for the first phase, and then there was another phase that began the second phase in August. It involved $2.3 million. 16 municipalities participated and involved providing coverage across the entire south countryside of Scott County. How do I advance it, JJ? Oh, there we go. So the project had multiple successes and some challenges. We installed 10 towers, equipment to the 10 towers and six micropops. We turned up service within six weeks from the first phase, which was an incredible feat. And we were able to deploy services within 16 weeks in the second phase. That included tower acquisition, permitting, structural analysis, equipment and placement, tuning, testing and pilot turn-up. Probably perhaps most incredible was that we were able to acquire fiber during that time, when fiber was anywhere from 26 to 52 weeks lead time to get fiber. But because of NetWave's contacts with the industry and their work in getting fiber, we were able to get fiber in hand and begin fiber installation. As the board may recall, our, our design was to have each tower have fiber backhaul for the fixed wireless deployment. So those three successes, I think, were really impressive. We incurred multiple challenges along the way as well. We had multiple installation teams that went down with COVID and had to quarantine for 14 days. We had a key micropop installer who was injured with an auger while installing a micropop. That gentleman is okay now.
Perry, clarify, clarify what a micropop is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A micropop is about a 40-foot tall, think of it as a telephone pole that has four smaller antennas on it compared to a macro tower, which is something that you'll see in one of the subsequent slides, that is one of those big radio towers that you see out on the countryside. We also incurred early on, an early morning, a winter freeze and the snow that came a little bit earlier than we were anticipating. And one other challenge that is, we're going through right now is a key resource where NetWave is undergoing some health issues, and we are working through that. They do have another principal that's working with that through operations. We are dealing with that, but that has been presented a challenge as we are deploying residents right now. So this is the resulting infrastructure that has been deployed. So from the slide, you can see that there's a, an example of the twin tower, which is a big radio tower. There's, there would be four antennas around each of the, covering each of the four sectors of a 360-degree radius. And starting from the blue, you can see that the blue marks where each of the tower deployments are. The yellow depicts where the fiber haul, backhaul is to our red fiber wing.
Can you make that map for the screen? You can have a little arrow in the middle, a little arrow on the gray bar on the right side.
Where?
The right side.
Oh, right here?
Yep, right there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. So starting on the, on the right-hand side, we have judicial tower, then right here is twin tower. Coming down to the bottom here is Webster Tower. Up here is the Gondor Tower. Here is the New Prague Tower. This is the Prague Water Tower. Over here is a series of... Over here is a series of smaller micropop towers in the Blakely area. This here is an antenna on top of the Jordan Library. This is the Jackson Tower. This is the Virgus Tower, and this is Eagle Tower. Each one was designed to cover a particular area that is underserved or unserved. I really think that it was pretty incredible that all this came together in such a short So we know where the areas of unserved and underserved areas remain in the county. There's multiple maps that I'm going to show you. One is this, this connection of our compilation from our 2019 to 2020 broadband surveys. This is a pre-COVID. It shows where our residents in those surveys depicted areas of dissatisfaction and satisfaction. Green is satisfied, they're satisfied with their current provider. Red is they are not satisfied with their current provider. It should be pointed out that dissatisfaction does not mean that they were below the speeds of 25 meg's download and 3 meg's upload, which is recommended by the FCC as minimum. It could be that they're unsatisfied with their current provider because of customer service or cost, or maybe they've been experiencing frequent outages. But we were able to determine from this map some, some areas of trends that we saw in rural parts of Scott County. This map shows the speeds. So the green shows speeds above 25 by 3, and the red shows areas below 25 by 3. Again, we can see some consistent trends. As reported by the residents, we had 705 respondents in the 2019 survey and 537 respondents in the 2020 survey. So as you continue to see these maps that I'm going to be bringing up, you'll see some consistent trends in the underserved areas. This is a map from the state of Minnesota before COVID, before March of 2020. This goes from the state of Minnesota, as reported by the, by the various internet service providers, where the area, where the state has determined that there are, we are unserved and underserved. So from the map, you can see that basically coming from Jackson Township into Louisville Township, all the way down into, into Spring Lake Township, Sand Creek Township, over here into St. Lawrence, Belgrade Township, into Blakely, parts of Alena, and then over into Elko or New Market Township, and up into Creda River, we have areas that are considered underserved and underserved. And as has been pointed out to us more before, these underserved and unserved areas are the last remaining very, very difficult spots to be, to get service. They're areas that are farms or down in ravines or in, on backs of the hills that quite frankly the other providers have bypassed because they're too difficult to get to.
Perry, if I could ask, back to that, you don't have to go back to the slide, but the dissatisfied, I'm aware that, you know, in certain areas, you know, more urban parts of the county, they, they have providers that the general public are not satisfied with, and some of these providers have almost a monopoly on the territory, you know, the, you know, the city of Savage or Prior Lake, or whatever it is. I mean, they don't have a, really a monopoly, but it's something, and almost. And I guess I'm wondering, could we see a day where the rural parts have better service than the cities? Because the rural parts are not locked up by companies that really don't, don't have much incentive to get fiber optic in, or? I guess I'm wondering, because I, again, I have a cabin way up in the boon docks in northern Minnesota, and I, I was paying for 1 gigabyte service what I pay for 100 megabytes down here. And, you know, so I, I'm just wondering about the dynamic we're facing with some of the providers and urban versus rural issues here.
Mr. Chair, I think that's an excellent question. You very well could see that initially. I think that cities, as they're reworking their franchise agreements, are able to start taking a page out of your playbook, which is, could we leverage fixed wireless and overlay it on a, on the city and make our incumbents with their legacy copper improve their game in order to retain their customers? This, this deployment is, you're going to see through this deployment that all of the providers in Scott County are going to continue to improve their game in order to, in order to meet this new level of service. There is a city in Scott County that is looking at this right now.
So Perry, to be clear, all those unsatisfied dots in Savage have nothing to do with the Commissioner representation? Okay, just to be clear.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Perry, can I, Mr. Chair, so anybody in the townships or even cities could sign up on this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, well, that is correct if they're, if they're within the coverage area. The, the design of the coverage was to specifically address the underserved and unserved areas. However, if there are residents who are in that coverage, coverage area, who are, who are well-served by another provider, could leverage this option if they chose. There's nothing preventing them.
And at time, you know, because I thought there was a certain number that could get on this, was it 5,600, did I hear you say, or was there a maximum?
There, there, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, well, there, there is on, there is a finite number per panel.
Yep.
But a provider could add additional antenna panels to address.
Keep on adding and popping, micropopping around.
Correct. As long as the tower structurally can sustain those antennas, yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right.
Which, Commissioner, that is why, one of the reasons that we were adamant about the backhaul design being over fiber and leveraging our Scott County fiber ring is be able to have that scalability so that we don't come back in five years and now the real demand is a gig, and everybody's really needing a gig, and they're, and they're asking this board, hey, can you help us get gig service? This provider and this, this design is scalable as to continue to meet the needs and demands as we move forward. That will, that, as I mentioned earlier, that will cause other providers to continue to improve their game.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
So let me ask you this, one more question here, Perry. You know, okay, do you see, this is a potential scale initiative where cities for sure and other jurisdictions would band together and sort of force the legacy providers to up their game to, or not?
Mr. Chair, I think that, that's a good conversation to have in the scale services delivery and maybe also at the scale executive board. But this, this project, which has had 16 municipalities or 16 entities all participate, I think it's really encouraging and shows how we can work together in this arena to, to drive results.
No, I, your work here and what you've done and what's been accomplished is fantastic. I'm just, I'm talking pretty much a separate issue, obviously.
Chair, Chair, Mr. Chair, I think that's a good comment, and I would just add on to that, that I think what has happened here, I mean, obviously, it's been led by the county, but it has been a scale initiative, based on what Perry said with, with all the entities participating. I think this is something that we forget, even though it's not named scale initiative, probably without the foundation and structure of scale, this would not have been near as successful. So it really is the ideals of what scale is, even if it doesn't have a white paper on it.
The value system, or values, that's the beliefs and values of scale that, that we hold, that, that would give us the, the will to say yes to this, really. Go ahead, I kind of cut somebody off, I think. Go ahead.
No, Mr. Chair, I would agree with that, is that, I remarked before that, I think that one of the powerful things about scale, as a side note from my perspective, is that it has allowed staff to have the opportunity to work across lines with their, their municipalities, because we feel empowered to do that and have those conversations with our, our colleagues. And because of scale, when I was able, when I went to the various township boards, they knew who I was and I knew who they were, and it made that conversation a lot easier. And in the end, the townships and the other municipalities contributed over $600,000 towards this initiative. So moving, moving forward, one thing I want to point out is that this, after we do our broadband survey later this spring, we'll have a better idea of what this picture looks like, both from a satisfaction perspective and from a speed perspective. We don't have that data right now, so I can't show that picture, but I can show some other So this was before our deployment in March of 2020. That's what our underserved and unserved areas look like. Following the, the deployment, based on NetWave's coverage map, this is the resulting areas of, that are underserved. You can see that there is, the areas that are underserved are greatly diminished from the previous slide. Also, NetWave will point out that some of these areas, like for example, down in Louisville Swamp or Louisville Park, that, that area is not, there's not residents there. So some of these areas are, they, they will always remain uncertain by the coverage map because, by design, there are gaps, and they, they design that way because there's not a resident there. Also, I'd like to point out that NetWave, in my conversation last night, they are absolutely committed to anybody who wants service in these underserved areas or unserved areas, they will work hard and they are committed to get service to that resident. So if somebody's just on the edge of a coverage area and they're uncertain, NetWave is not going to say, oh, sorry, they're going to continue to work to get that resident service. I wanted to point out again that this is based, this is not 100% accurate, it's based on the, on the gaps in the coverage of NetWave's reported coverage space. Also, I wanted to point out that the speeds that we're seeing are anywhere from 30 megabits per second up and down to 140 meg's up and down. The average speed is somewhere between 70 megabits per second up and down to 100 megabits per second up and down. That's about the average that I'm hearing from talking to residents. The residents have been very happy with the speed. It's nearly six times the FCC's recommended levels.
Mr. Chair, will that go down as there's more people, will it get diluted?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, well, that's an excellent question. The answer to that is no.
Really? Wow.
So the difference in this, in this design is, from your house and you're hitting directly that tower, and then it's going back on, on fiber, you're being backhauled by fiber at 10 gigabits per second, which can, we can scale that to 100 meg, 100 meg, or to a gig, or, I'm sorry, 100 gig, whatever we need to do in order to address that and to alleviate that compared to, say, coaxial cable or copper. So because you are hitting that antenna directly, and Commissioner Beard's house is hitting that antenna directly, if you guys are both watching movies or you're, you know, you're working hard or any of that, it's not going to saturate that design because it's going right to it, and then it's backhauled over a very big pipe.
Oh, wow, pretty good.
So what about their customer service? What I have, I've received, and as well as seeing you guys, we've received positive feedback from residents over the course of this past year about NetWave's service. These are just a few of the comments, but overall, people have been very happy. Once installed, they've been very happy with the service, with the speed, with the reliability of the service, and also with when they do have an issue and they're talking to troubleshooting, they've found that that, that customer service, the technical rep has been very responsive. One of the challenges that we are having is, which you can see on the next slide, is from when they sign up to when they get installed, there's, is a challenge in communication. That was articulated to me last night in the Creda River Township meeting, and I addressed that with NetWave, and I'm confident that they will, they will address that concern of from when somebody has signed up to when they're going to get installed, addressing that communication.
Perry, when do you think everyone will be signed up that wants to be signed up for this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, well, it's just my, my guess, I think that through the course of the next three to four months, this will start playing out. You'll, you'll continue to see this, you know, high interest, you know, and then I think that once they get everybody who is in those really hard-to-reach spots installed, then it'll start sort of playing out. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
So similar to the previous maps, this map is from March of 2020, and it showed, I think this board has seen this map before, it shows the areas of the percentage of availability by township as provided to us by the state. You can see, for example, Blakely only has 36.75% availability above 25 by 3. The yellow is anything below 40%, green is 41 to 80%, the light blue is 81 to 90%, and the blue is above 91%. So we have those areas that were underserved in the southwest and through all the way over to New Market. This is following the, this board's investment in CARES' broadband deployment. Scott County is now considered well-served. These are numbers reported to me by NetWave. As you can see, they are well above 90%, which the, the state would consider well-served at this point. It's exciting that this, that this means one of this board's strategies, which was to work together with community partners, private-public partners, and community partners to do targeted expansion of our broadband services through those partners to meet the needs of our residents in those underserved areas. This slide shows the number of homes that have signed up. So as of January 15th, we've had 500 residents installed and on the service. We have another 571 that are, signed up and are waiting service. NetWave has six crews that are actively working to do the installs and do the fine-tuning of the, of the system. They had the system installed and in place, that principal infrastructure, by December 31st, but they are still fine-tuning it. They told me that by, by turning an antenna just one degree on a tower, might be able to hit 30 homes in a, in a ravine that they weren't aware of and not sacrifice over any homes on the other side. So then we are still fine-tuning it with the macro towers, antennas, and the micropops. Again, the speeds have been very good. There has been tremendous interest. NetWave is actively trying to add additional crews to, they're working with two national account teams that are adding the crews. Right now, they're on pace of installing about 50 residents per week. They're trying to get that number down so that the lead time obviously isn't so long.
How long, Perry, and Mr. Chair, how long, and what is all involved in hooking up to somebody's house? Do they just come over and do they got to start drilling holes in your house and putting things in, or do you know what they do?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, well, that's, that's another great question. What's involved in is, just like, if you're familiar with Dish Network, the antenna that goes on top of a roof and points at a tower, that's essentially it. Of 85% of the installs, it's that simple. Even in the underserved area, the hard-to-served areas, but even now within that last remaining spot, there might be that 5 or 10% that require either another antenna on top of the roof, like a 20-foot antenna that goes, that's mounted on top of the roof, or maybe they'll ask them to cut down a limb of a tree. So there is something that needs to do in order to point to a tower. But the great news about now this deployment is that their tower options, each one of the towers has a seven-mile radius, so they can point now to a lot of different towers to be able to get service, whereas before they could only point this way towards a tower, and if there's a tree line, that house was in trouble. But now they can point this way where there is no tree line and point the antenna, that, that antenna that's mounted on the roof that way for service. And then it would go inside the house, they would run a cable inside the house to a router, a little box, you know, to, to exchange the service and to be able to provide the internet service.
Okay, wow.
Perry, can you scroll up? I just want to see the headings on this.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
There's, some of the townships that were in the first deployment obviously have more homes deployed at this point because they were, that was since March, and some of the ones that are just coming online, you can see that there's a higher win list compared to the installs, like for example, Creda River or Alena, that are, they're actively trying to work through. that are, they're actively trying to work through. Any questions about this now before I move on? So one of the challenges also has been getting the word out. The most effective word is person-to-person, word of mouth. Residents have become somewhat jaded over the years, especially in these really hard-to-reach spots that they've been on dial-up for years and they've gone, they've seen flyers, and they've called these new providers and then they get the same answer as, oh yeah, we do offer it, but not in your, in your area, but not specifically to your home. So when NetWave has done some mailings and things like that, they've met that resistance. But now that people are starting to get on the service and we have the local testimonial that, hey, I've been on it now for a couple of months and it works really well, that has, that has really improved. So Scott County, initially, we did a lot of, when COVID first kicked off in the first deployment, we did a lot of social media, worked with Lisa Corner and her team, and we were able to get word out through Nextdoor, Facebook, and through Twitter. I believe some of the commissioners have also helped do some social media along that route of making people aware of this service. We did some initial publicity through a press release and looked at newspapers and those ran in April and May. We ran an article in the Scott County scene. We have a full page report that's coming out in the Scott County Resident Report that should be, I believe, hitting people's homes in the next month. And we've communicated to the township's residents through the township clerks. That has been, I think, the most effective way of getting word out to residents in the local townships. Access NetWave has done direct mailings. They've communicated directly with township residents. They've encouraged word of mouth from neighbor to neighbor, and that has been effective. They've also been on Nextdoor Communications. They have a planned op-ed coming up in newspapers this month. And they will be beginning a direct marketing campaign that will start in March and April and continue on.
Perry?
Perry, just, oh, go ahead, Barb.
Thanks, thanks. But my concern or my comment would be, I do think we need to continue marketing and informing people, but I also feel like we got to let NetWave, I mean, we don't want to be marketing if people are going to be number 800 on the installation list, too. So I really think we got to watch that and give people reasonable expectations. Because, yeah, any of us, if we call and want something, I'm thinking it's going to get installed in the next week or two. And I'm going to get mad if it's not. And so I think that's really important to put those expectations out there and let people understand the situation and why.
Commissioner, I think that's an excellent point and something that I will make sure I carry to NetWave. I think managing, as I mentioned earlier, managing that communication from sign up to install and that lead time is our current challenge.
I, Mr. Chair Perry, it's just been so nice that Perry has been over-communicating, in my opinion, to the townships that, and even when I call, and I know I called him one day, and I don't know if it was December, early January, and he was on vacation, and he answered and got the questions answered. So he's been going above and beyond with this to get people going on this, and I appreciate that. So even last night, he was with Credit River and I think he was on with Spring Lake Township. So maybe you're having that experience too, Barb, but yes, thank you.
Thank you. So as I wrap up, I just wanted to say that this has been really an incredible, incredible project. It's actually one of the reasons that I got into county work in the first place is to be able to make an impact. And it may be the same reason that the board got into working for the county. And to be able to, during this time of this COVID emergency, this piece of time emergency, to be able to directly impact the lives of our residents has been incredible. This deployment has been the talk of the town in the broadband circles. And it has been the envy of a lot of other neighboring counties that Lusor was able to get in and able to do this as well with NetWave, but NetWave had to tell all the other ones that called them, sorry, we can't do it. And so they ended up having to turn in their care sellers and those kinds of things. And people have called me, multiple entities have called me and asked, geez, I really wish we would have done that. And so I just want to return that kudos back to you commissioners and the county leadership and my boss Cindy, that to have the insight and wherewithal to go and pursue this, I think it's been great and I was very happy to be just a part of it.
Well, I will say, this is going to make a big impact. And I've had other commissioners from other counties call. How did you guys get this done? I have, you know, so this is, we are being envied by this, so thank you.
And Mr. Chair Perry, a couple of things, like your first slide said 26 miles of new fiber. Like, that just does not happen. And overnight especially, and it kind of did. For a couple of reasons, the county had the foresight to have fiber way back when. Well, it was not that far back, but, so it was there and easier to hook into. I think Chair Ulrich talked about, used the word values of the county, that you didn't have to go introduce yourself to the township clerk or this person or that person. We all know each other because we've spent time together. Remember the good old days when we actually spent time together? But so that flattened the whole conversation. And I'm reminded, I believe it was March, that I was chasing powder with my kid out in South Dakota and I pulled over into Trailhead because I had a conference call with Commissioner Weckman-Brecke in Leslie about, hey, we're putting towers up because this whole Corona thing's happening and nothing to do with the conference call itself, but more the timing. And here we are, having this coverage map being completely different in less than a year. I mean, that is your government at work. We're not curing cancer, that's coming next, but I mean, this is a big deal. This is a big deal. This is a big deal. The government, sometimes you could argue by design, I'm using that generally, not specific to Scott, is not always fast or action-oriented. And this, man, this moved fast. You pushed it, which is awesome. We were prepared to do the right thing, that helps. And we had relationships in place and backbone in place, so awesome. Now I'm going to turn the corner a little bit to say, those coverage maps are unbelievable. But there's also, and you're a junkyard dog, and that's why I want to keep you to be a junkyard dog, Perry, is to, there's USDA grants, I think, still floating around out there. There's the new border-to-border within the state. And I know where we're located, we might not always score highly on, but your tenacity could go a long way in sinking your teeth into that bone and trying to bring some of that money back to Scott County to continue to enhance these services so that the cure of cancer can come right thereafter. So awesome job. I think that really shines a spotlight on Scott County and what is possible. So thanks for staying on this and continue to stay on it, and we want to do a weekend, too.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much. If there's no other questions, or is there, is there a question?
Well, I have a comment here. Commissioner Brecky pointed out that this really was a scale initiative or is a scale initiative. And what I'd like is, if you could work with Tracy to get this on the scale agenda, to present it scale, and maybe work with Lisa Corner to put a couple more slides in here of how this is a scale initiative and what all was required in terms of coming together and working on this to make this happen. It's a fantastic project and a great success story, and it really should be called out as a scale effort. And so if, you know, in March or whenever is appropriate, if we can get you on the agenda for scale, that would be excellent.
Mr. Chair, we will do that for sure. Thank you. Have a wonderful morning.
Thank you very much. Any more comments or questions? I guess not, Perry's. Thank you, Perry. We're on to item 6.3, which is to receive a progress update to the Scott County strategic plan.
You know what, you don't get to see all of those. I was listening this morning and I thought that maybe we'd go light on the data this morning. How's that? They're local pictures, too.
First one's a great start here.
Yeah, yeah, I know, they're nice Scott County pictures that you're going to get to look at. But yeah, we're going to, we're going to spoon out some of the data for you this morning. How's that? You're welcome. I would still welcome you to get coffee if you'd like. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Seems like we've spent a lot of time together this year, doesn't it? I feel like I've been here quite a lot. All right, Mr. Chairman, good morning. Are you ready for us to start, or would you like us to wait a moment?
I think we're ready, aren't we?
I think so. Wonderful, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Brad Davis and I are here to talk a little bit this morning about progress on the strategic plan. And you'll remember that in December of 2019, this board approved an updated strategic plan that laid out five objectives and a series of strategies. And Brad and I would like to talk to you about some of the work that's been done on that over the last year. I do want to just preface this and say that we did have some question when we started putting this together about, could you reasonably expect some things didn't happen because of COVID? Did we have the bandwidth to continue to work on the strategic plan? And in truth, some things did get postponed and everything that was postponed can be reset. But what you're also going to hear this morning is really that quite a lot of work did get accomplished despite COVID and that it maybe looks different or to happen in a different priority, but the work continued. And so that's why we thought it was important to bring it forward to you today. So Brad and I are going to talk about a little bit of data, but we're going to really focus on the work that's been done over the last year towards that strategic plan. So just really briefly, we're going to talk a little bit about community indicators. So that's that, those data sets that tell us a little bit about how are our communities faring? And to be honest, we're not going to spend a lot of time with this. 2020 just ended and all of our community indicator data is from pre-pandemic. And so I just don't know that it's very important for us to spend a lot of time on. I do want to spend a little more time where we have 2020 data and we'll certainly bring back those updated community indicators once our data sources have compiled them. So we're going to share a little bit of that. We're going to share a little bit of key performance data from our programs that tell you how our programs performed. And then we're going to talk about some of our key partnerships, highlighting specifically our work with the University of Minnesota Resilient Communities and the outcome from those projects. All right. And I did, I did commit to Commissioner Beard that we were going to advance through a few slides. So let's look at the first objective. Through strategic partnerships, residents will have convenient and reliable access to an expanded array of services. This was an extremely broad objective. There were, there were four strategies, two that dealt with the wellness of our residents so that our most vulnerable residents would have access and availability of the services they need and also that residents would have services that would promote them leading healthy, active lives. We're going to focus on those two strategies first and then come back to the other two. This is the one community indicator I do want to look at with regard to access to services. And this looks at what is our residents' access to mental health professionals? And I highlighted this because, as you know, the pandemic has been widely detrimental to people with mental health concerns and substance abuse issues, maybe to, maybe to us all to some extent. And so this data looks at what is, what is the community access to providers? And what it shows you is that residents have improving access to mental health care by population. There are smaller numbers of patients per provider. There are a growing number of providers in our community. There's a smaller percentage of those providers that are employed by the county. And so the net result is that we have this desirable growth in community-based providers that gives our residents choices and it gives a more robust service array for people to access. This is some data, this is performance data from our Min Choices program. This is the county program. And this is the gateway program for our senior citizens who need help to live independently or for people with disabilities. And this program is their gateway to a comprehensive assessment that helps social workers set up services that will support them. The state's goal is that 100% of the people who apply to this program have one of those comprehensive assessments within 20 days. We have not currently, in 2020, we did not meet that goal. Some of that is staffing, some of that is increased demand, and some of that is complications related to COVID. So we'll continue to watch that data. In particular, we know that our population is very gradually increasing in age. So that's data we want to stay on top of. This data is performance data from our Mental Health Center and it looks at what percentage of people in crisis were able to access a crisis appointment within four hours. 99% of those requests were responded to within four hours. And what I think is most inspiring truly is that that service has continued despite COVID, much of it by telemedicine, some face-to-face, but much of it by telemedicine. And we have a Scott County Delivers coming up in a couple of months that will share more information about that with you. So when we look at services to move us toward our objective, in the areas of mental health, we saw the opening of the ERTS. We have seen treatment court transition to a county-funded program. We saw the initiation of Vets Court and the first, the first folks going through that program, even as the staff is training and getting geared up. We've started the Drug-Free Communities Initiative, which is the Scott County Delivers in February. We'll see new space for the Mental Health Center and the Anchor Center in the new Government Center West, which will expand what we have available to, for resource for people to receive mental health services. I talked already about mental telemedicine. And the Living Well Grant is a transportation grant that helps vulnerable citizens with their transportation needs.
That's okay. All right, I'm going to help Chris from time to time come up and give her a break and just talk about how we're moving the needle. What are we really doing to change some of these data points and what projects can we point at? And this slide talks a little bit about how we have completed projects to really improve some of those healthy lifestyle goals. And some of the trail work we do is really important. I think the 42 project is an example of creating an important link in our trail system between 83 and 17, or Highway 13, excuse me. You know, in the photo here, you see the 42 expansion work and the trails being graded in at the time of the photo. Right now, it looks like this might be just out in the countryside, but I think it's important to know that that land north of 42 in the city of Shakopee, I think we're going to start seeing some strong interest in development. And so we're going to have more and more neighborhoods up against this segment of the corridor and we'll be able to utilize that trail. So that's kind of the forward thinking shown there in that photograph. I think we're doing a better job promoting our existing trails and we did that through some wayfinding signage and naming of that Big Woods Regional Trail that you were involved in this past year. One project that came out of Resilient Communities was Edible Land Uh, one project that came out of Resilient Communities was, um, Edible Landscapes. This is the idea that, um, in your public open spaces, there's an opportunity to grow trees or shrubs or, uh, plants that would be able to actually be harvested by the public. And this is a concept that some students were, uh, kicking around and, and providing some best practices from other places around the country. It's taken root here in Shakopee and, um, I think a week ago, the, the Parks Commission approved edible landscape in Scenic Heights Park, that's the park, uh, next to the East Middle School here in town. Uh, the, there's a partnership with the Masco Gardens to really start installing, um, those shrubs and trees and they're looking at this spring to do that. So that's just another, an example of a, a real-life project that sprung from some, um, students looking at ideas to a real-life application here. I will turn it back over to Chris.
So how long will you, the city, you'll be, you'll sign, like, keep watching, Brad? I just had a test.
All right. Let's, let's talk about these other two strategies. So the, I told you at the beginning that this first objective was big and expansive. The first two strategies sort of focus on individual residents. The last two strategies certainly focus on residents, but also have a, a bigger community, public safety, um, feel. And so, uh, the third strategy is around reducing recidivism among adults and youth and making communities safer and enhancing the safety of residents by ensuring efforts to prepare them and their communities for emergencies. So there are two community indicators that we look at when we talk about public safety. The first is the serious crime rate or the Part One crimes. These are the more serious crimes and as you can see and as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, we see a gradual, um, decline in those serious crimes, both in Scott County and across the state.
Chris, um, Mr. Chair, um, I'm, I'm looking at, this is a rate number.
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, this, so the numbers down below in the columns going across are not aggregate numbers. That's still a rate for hundred thousand.
Correct, correct.
Uh, thank, I answer my own question.
All right. Second community indicator we look at is Part Two crimes and these are, are often, um, more related to property crimes or financial crimes. There's some drug and alcohol-related offenses in that group as well. That, uh, again, shows, um, relatively, um, consistent, safe, um, communities across Scott County. We don't have state data for that yet. This is performance data from our dispatch office. And so when we talk about public safety, how able are we to respond to those nine-one-one dispatch calls in a timely way? And at this point, um, we are not meeting the national standards related to the, this measure. Uh, some of the factors that have influenced that, um, include an increase in call volume up three or four percent stat, a year. Staffing hasn't necessarily kept up with those increases. Uh, there are also some data collection difficulties around this data so we need to refine this data a little bit before we draw big conclusions about that. Commissioner Beer, were you gonna ask me a question? Okay. All right. This is performance data from our Department of Corrections, looking at recidivism among adults who commit felonies and what percentage of those commit another felony within three years after getting off probation. And this is data we talked about with Molly Bruner. It's the work she's doing with her team to look at those underlying issues that bring people into our criminal justice system as well as how well our supervision levels match our risk levels. And, uh, this is also the interesting piece, I think, as we go forward, where we've seen a slight increase in recidivism among adults. We are seeing a decrease in recidivism among juveniles. And that'll be an important thing for us to dig into and learn a little bit more about. This is performance data from our Emergency Management Office. Uh, this looks at the number of staff in Scott County that have received. This. That was a nice response to the crisis at hand. So this is our crisis, our NIMS training. Uh, so National Incident Management System Training. This is training that the, um, that FEMA considers when they respond and look at, um, compensation to jurisdictions after, um, some kind of catastrophic event. So we want our staff to be trained and, and able to respond in an emergency. All of our senior leadership team members have been trained in NIMS and many of our staff. And that is largely through a combined effort of Emergency Management and ER, who put, who moved all of that training from an in-person, um, event and created online modules so that staff who are working at home could access that training last year. Moving towards our objectives, so as we looked at, um, as we looked at the work we did in this area, we've started the very initial phases of the criminal justice evaluation and the analysis of, of risks and safety supervision levels. We've initiated a data collection process for folks in our jail. And I think this is gonna be very helpful as we look at those underlying conditions and I'm pretty excited about that project. And you all provided some helpful information to us, um, a couple of weeks ago about some things to add to that survey that will give us a better picture. Uh, we hired a data analyst for scale, um, as of earlier this week. And his primary task will be to work with our law enforcement agencies, looking at workloads, response times, mutual aid, and how we might best use our resources in that way. Uh, we now have a staff that is fully capable of operating in an EOC kind of environment. We have fully updated continuity of operations plans. We talked about NIMS training. Uh, we have, uh, also seen in two thousand nineteen, we saw a record high in the number of medical providers who volunteered for our Medical Reserve Corps. And like, how fortunate was that, that those people came forward in two thousand nineteen and have been there now to help us through the pandemic? In twenty twenty, we had over a hundred volunteers who contributed four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five hours specific to COVID relief, uh, which is really just a phenomenal, uh, investment, but on the part of our community. And likewise, we have public health, our public health programs, which you've heard about all throughout the pandemic and the expertise that they've developed through this process. All right. Objective two is housing. Partners will come together to support expanded housing resources, recognizing that housing is a community foundation. There is a single strategy for this objective and that is to implement a plan to ensure appropriate housing is available to meet the needs of all residents and that homeless is brief, rare, and non-recurring. There's one community indicator we're gonna look at for this and that's the share of households paying thirty percent or more of their income. This is, um, this is going to be critically important for us to look at. Tracy unplugged it. Leslie Tracy said she unplugged it from wherever she is.
Well, here's the quarter right here.
There we go. All right. So this is a, is a widely recognized community marker of affordable housing in communities. Obviously, this is pre-pandemic. It, it reflected that twenty-four percent, little over twenty-four percent of our population was paying thirty percent or more. Uh, this again is gonna be critically important information for us to be watching as we look at what happens once housing moratoriums are lifted and, um, people, uh, return to work and just how our economy will stabilize after those, uh, pieces, uh, come together. This is performance data from our homeless pro, program here in Scott County and just looks at the number of residents who were on a waitlist for more than ninety days trying to get housing. Uh, and so as of the end of two thousand nineteen, about thirteen percent were referred to housing within thirty days, or within ninety days, I'm sorry. And that's the joint work of, um, Scott County CAB and CDA along with some other private agencies.
All right, Commissioners, there's been some really big accomplishments under your housing objective and I wanna highlight a few of them here in the next few slides. One really important piece to this objective is that plan. And really, it's, it's a couple of plans that are gonna be coming, uh, towards completion this year. One is the Scale Housing Blueprint. This is an important effort to be being done with all of the members of Scale, looking at what are our plans and goals and policies around housing in each of our respective, uh, local plans? Where do we see a lot of common elements that we should really start working together on more closely? Where can we share some of our resources to really move on some of those policy decisions and some of those recommendations? We brought together a lot of, uh, leadership and decision-makers for a, uh, a couple of work sessions in October to really talk through some of these issues, try to see where some of our key priorities are. And, uh, that will all now be documented in a blueprint that will slowly start getting, uh, rolled out to larger and larger groups. And we, uh, intend to bring it to s, the full-scale, uh, membership in March and then start introducing the plan to each of the different member communities after that. So that's a really important accomplishment. Parallel to that is, uh, every ten years, um, Scott and Carver County, uh, prepare their plan in homelessness. So there's a lot of important data and information, recommendations that are also coming out of that plan as well. So both of these, um, parallel documents, I think, are gonna be important for you to be paying attention to here this year. Another project that, um, sprang from the Resilient Communities Project was, uh, an idea that we heard in other communities, uh, Community Land Trust. That's where a, uh, organization purchases lots and then the homes themselves are available to people, uh, if they qualify to purchase just the home and, and, and take out the mortgage on just the home. So it's a, it's a, uh, ability for people, usually first-time home buyers, to get into the market at a little bit more, you know, affordable rate. Um, that land trust was formally established, uh, last year in two thousand twenty by the CDA. Two homes have been purchased, one in Shakopee and one in Savage. The photo on the right is the actual home in Savage. The last I heard, they were screening applicants, um, to see who could start occupying those homes. And, um, there's also plans to purchase a lot down in New Prague and get a home constructed up there this year. So I think some exciting things happening with the land trust to keep tracking here over the next year. So, yeah, Commissioner Beer.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Brad, um, first, just a, an observation on the ten-year homelessness plan and then a question, because I think I heard you say Scott and Carver County continually update our tenure plan to, which would lead me to assume that it's kind of a rolling ten-year plan. And I remember, um, my first term in the legislature, uh, the homelessness was all the rage. Again, it was a very pressing issue. Governor Palente convened a Blue Ribbon Commission to end homelessness in ten years. And we threw like a hundred and fifty million dollars, uh, at it at that time. Uh, of course, as I was cycling out of the legislature, I don't remember what happened exactly, but I know this year, Governor Wallace has again convened a Blue Ribbon Commission to end homelessness. And I think, um, there's a lesson here, that homelessness is always a, a, a problem, a situation. And, uh, I don't know that there's a direct correlation, but there may be, between the amount of money the government throws at the problem and the size of the problem. San Diego, Los Angeles, Portland, San Francisco, all spring to mind, spending billions. And they've got massive problems with homeless encampments and things like that. Just an observation. And it seems that, uh, and I hope that we're keeping this in mind, that homelessness is a transitory, can be a transitory thing, like unemployment. I've been unemployed several times in my life, but I never said, oh, darn, I'm unemployed and then made myself part of the permanent unemployed class. We always, all of us, it happens to us. And I think homelessness, um, is, if there's an element to that, uh, that we look at as a transitory thing and we depend on people to grab their bootstraps and do something about it. I hope that that's being factored into here when we're looking at our, updating our continuous rolling tenure plan to, uh, to end homelessness. I, I don't even know that there's a question in there. I just wanna make sure that we're thinking about these things and we're thinking about a strategic plan, that we can't drive down a stake and say by two thousand twenty-nine, there won't be a homeless person in Scott County. I, I think that's unrealistic to expect that. And I hope that's not gonna color our efforts, but that, um, that we'll kind of be dealing in reality. I, I guess that's the end of my comments on that, just.
No, thank you, Commissioner Beer. Uh, comments well taken, yep. And I didn't hear a question in there, so I won't try to answer one. So, uh, just a few other things. This board made a really important decision in, uh, late last year on, um, some commitments to some affordable housing here in Shakopee, primarily, uh, with, in partnership with Beacon and Prairie Point. So that should not go unnoticed. That was a, a really big decision. Uh, as you know, you get continuous updates of how CURE's, uh, money are being used to help with the mortgage and rental assistance and the progress that we're making in that area. The county, uh, last year purchased, uh, a few homes, I think three, I think three homes, a couple on Marshall Road and another on County Road forty-two. And there's a lot of discussion and investigation whether those homes could potentially be reused for some type of supportive or reentry housing. And as you also know, uh, there's been a lot of discussion on your legislative platform and how you can expand some of the housing resources that are offered here in the metro area. I'll turn it back over to Chris.
Mr. Chairman, it, um, it's not a well-formed thought, but there's just this uneasy feeling about the Beacon Prairie Point thing that this Commissioner, uh, just wants to make sure the rest of my colleagues hear about. This, I don't remember a definitive vote that we ever took saying, darn it, we're gonna do this. It just kinda pushed its way into line and moved along with our capital improvement budget. And I think we gave an indication that, that we probably would set some money aside in a future year. Um, that's not sitting well with me, I just gotta tell you. There's something going on here that I, I can't put my finger on, I need to think about a little more. Maybe we should circle back and have another discussion. But part of it is, it's not just the capital. There's going to be an ongoing commitment for future county boards and it's gonna be a couple hundred thousand a year to make this thing work. And I'm not sure, and we don't have to solve it here today, I just wanna put this on the table that, that, I don't want anybody misreading, that there was a five-oh vote and more enthusiastically a support of whatever is happening at Beacon and Prairie Point. I have some concerns about several aspects of it, not the least of which is the politicization of the whole issue and kind of the way it, to me, my way of thinking, it kind of butted in the line with other things that we're doing. And having my other comments about the solution to the problem may not necessarily be throwing more money at it and we're being asked to commit a lot of money going into the future. And I, again, I'm not asking a question right now. I just feel that part of the, my duty as a Commissioner to my colleagues and the people I represent is just to express that. And if people have comments, concerns, or insights that I'm missing, convince me. I'm willing to be convinced.
One thing I would like to say to that is regardless of where you feel we are at with, uh, the capital commitment, we have not made any commitment to ongoing subsidy. That's a separate discussion, in my opinion.
Thank you.
So, you know, Commissioner Brecker, you were about.
Well, I, I don't have a question either, but, uh, if we're gonna keep making comments, I guess I would make one about that. I, I do think we made a commitment that, to the capital, uh, portion of, of that project. And we keep circling back. And this project isn't about ending homelessness for people who are transient, unemployed, that, we, we keep kind of mixing that up. I think the requirements of this whole project and the thing that made so many of our constituents say, we think this is important, is because the people who, the only people who are qualified to live here have some serious issues that we're paying for anyways out of tax dollars and trying to give them a stable place is hopefully gonna fix some of those things. And if we can't, if we can't ever start doing some of, supporting this preventive, long-term, let's help Beacon and these faith communities get involved and support these, these, um, citizens of ours, we're just gonna have to keep increasing the. ours, we're just going to have to keep increasing the budgets of our county attorney and our sheriff and child protection, which has been our, you know, that's what we've been doing. Each year, we keep increasing those budgets, decreasing everything else without thinking, how can we really invest and change this trajectory? And I think we had a lot of discussion about this, about this is an opportunity to maybe do that. So no question, just a comment about that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it is exactly right. There's no operating commitment at all, and Beacon is aware of that. And we are having discussions on what does that look like. If you remember, one of Director Selvig's takeaways was to look at what are the impacts of some of the people right now that we're spending a considerable amount of money on? And if you remember the other one, go back to Judge Wilton, we're going to continue to have people cycling in and out of this if we don't have a place to help them get stable. And then as a launching pad, as they're going through things like treatment court and vets' court, not every vet is a single male. They have families, and they need a place as they're going through this. And so as Commissioner Ulrich said, there's no commitment to operating. It was the capital. Director Selvig is taking a look at the operations, and what does it mean for folks that are in and out of our program? And does that even have some lowering of the operating cost potentially that could help there? So, yeah, there was no commitment to operating, Commissioner Beard.
I remember the question that came up regarding the operating was a pro forma of sorts, and I know you can't project what ifs, but the replacement of dollars that would be going out the door, as Commissioner Breck just mentioned, versus dollars that would be going in here, is that a good return for, both on the human perspective and on the financial perspective? I'm still waiting to see those numbers, and it may take a while to develop them, so.
Well, we don't need to debate the merits of this today, but if we need another workshop, which I'm sure we do, you know, especially in regard to anything in the future, let's do it there.
Thanks for your comments.
It's kind of fun to talk about instead of just agreeing on everything all the time.
Thank you all for those comments. The third objective in the strategic plan was about children, and the objective was that strong families and community partners will come together, supporting children in having safe, healthy, and successful lives. There was a single strategy in this objective as well, and that is that we would promote healthy child development and family resiliency by aligning resources and community partnerships directed at prevention and early intervention. So there's four, four community indicators that I'd like to look at regarding children that say something about how they are faring in our communities, and these will be, continue to be important metrics to watch as we come out of the pandemic. So the first, the first community indicator is on the rate of timely high school graduations. And Scott County continues to perform well in this area, and our rates of timely on-time high school graduations are stronger than the state rates and have been for some time. And that's, that's really good news for our communities. Second community indicator is the percent of third graders who read at grade level. You have heard a lot about this metric and why it's important for children to be able to read by third grade. This is a performance, a set of data that is showing some decrease in performance, and that's a bit of a red flag as we look at how to support children and families going forward. It makes this objective important, and it reflects the need for some of the tools that we know already are successful, like early screening.
That slide, the, if I can make a comment on the third grade reading and the graduation rates, they don't seem to jive with each other based on what we've been told about the data, that, that the, if, for those that are not reading at grade level, third grade, they put a really high percentage of that population that would not graduate from high school. But yet we are in the 85s or something percent graduation from high school, and then, and we're at this reading rate of third grade. They don't seem to sync with the data that we've been told. But anyhow, that's just a comment. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that.
I do. There's actually two things to consider in that. One is that we have a request in right now to the Minnesota Compass Data Bank for the third grade reading levels for children that are graduating, like in the last couple of years. So for the kids who graduated in 2019, 2018, 2017, what did their third grade reading levels look like? So we could do something closer to an apples-to-apples comparison. There's also a change in the testing mechanism that occurred in 2016, and so all counties saw a small dip in testing results or in rates of third grade reading in 2016 and after based on a change in testing. So that's just a piece to keep in mind.
Can I just one comment? I think that's the most alarming chart we've seen today, and I wonder what's going to happen here in 2020, you know, with whatever is not going on in schools, because when that thing's going down, you know, we're only 8% away from half the kids are not reading at the third grade. That's alarming to me, you know? I said that before, so that's, that's it.
I agree, the data's going to be important to watch the next couple of years. And I'll just add on to Chris's comment and Commissioner Ulrich's question. You're right, Commissioner Ulrich, we don't have really great data that lines up, but the third grade reading, we're starting to see data, at least there's anecdotal evidence and, and starting to see data where it's not just high school graduation, so maybe that's not a perfect causal correlation, but it has to do with, you know, employment, court justice system involvement, things like that. The kids weren't reading at third grade level, it's other life choices, situations, we could find all kinds of words for that, that, that are influencing things. And I think from our chairs, you know, that's what we care about. Those have some real public policy implications. So I agree, it's kind of, the numbers don't match up with high school graduation, and I guess, you know, in our minds, that might be, ooh, should all those kids be graduating from, from high school if they didn't recover from that third grade reading problem? What, what's going on there, too? So lots, lots more questions and answers on, on this topic.
And it will be really important. I think that public health and child protection, you're going to hear from them in March at a Scott delivers about kids that have, have increasing, increasingly districts are reporting kids failing classes at rates that we haven't seen before. Some children just have not been able to benefit from distance learning, and some children have kind of been lost, really, and, and not really shown up in the distance learning environment, and just not sure where those kids even are in terms of school attendance. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of concerning elements that will impact this data going forward, I think. This is a community indicator that is drawn from the Minnesota Student Survey, most recently completed in 2019. And this looks at the percentage of children that feel like they're connected to a caring adult, either in their community or in their school. I think it's interesting that consistently, girls feel more connected at a young age and boys feel more connected at an older age, and so like, understanding more about that would be interesting. This exam, or this survey is given to fifth graders and 11th graders, so you can see the change over time. Young children report feeling more connected than do older children. And it's important to remember that that feeling of connection is research-based, and it is associated with the avoidance of high-risk behaviors, that, that children and youth who feel connected to a caring adult, that is considered a developmental asset that helps them be resilient and helps protect them from getting involved in things that we would wish them not to. They are also statistically less likely to be bullied, they're less likely to bully, and they're more likely to be socially and academically successful. So it's a pretty important measure. And this is the last community indicator we're going to look at regarding children, and that's the rate of children per population who are subject to maltreatment. So this looks at what, what is the rate of children that are reported to child protection in our county for the first time? And as you can see, Scott County has consistently had a lower rate of those first reports than the state rate. When we looked at how our programs are supporting those community outcomes or influencing those community indicators, this is a look at county, state, and by district, the percent of kindergartners that are screened at age three. And we did a little deeper dive into that data. So 50% of kids in Scott County in 2019, 50% of children in Scott County were screened by age three, 32% were screened by age five, and 18% weren't screened until they entered this, the public school system. And so continue to, to work on opportunities to make those screens available for young kids. As we move forward on this, we are developing some performance measures for the Kindle project that you supported as a board, and looking at, does that, does that project make a difference for children and early rates of screening? Certainly, the library programs are actively contributing to early literacy. As of December 1st in 2020, we had 476 people had participated in youth service programs in our library, and over 31,000 had participated in off-site summer youth reading programs. So those are not unique people, those are people that probably participated in multiple programs, but really active use of our summer reading programs despite the pandemic. This is a performance measure from child protection that you're probably familiar with. This looks at the percent of children who are the subject of more than one maltreatment report within 12 months. It does not mean that children experienced two episodes of maltreatment, but it means where they were referred twice. And so it's a red flag, like, to look at, are there reasons to be concerned about this child? At the time that I pulled this data, which was right at the end of, of December, they were just on the, just on the bubble of whether or not we would meet this performance measure in 2020. There was a percentage point or two, depending on how the final records from 2020 are concluded. So as we move forward on children, there's lots of work done on this, this year, despite the pandemic. We have actively looked for ways to support early childhood screening as a key mechanism for supporting growth and development. Public health is moving their WIC clinic to the new Government Center West in 2022, and that'll provide easier access for testing. The library, as I said, has supported early learning. They produce these really beautiful summer packets for kids. They have done online Storytime. I don't know if you guys saw this, but they had one of their librarians who went into a little chicken coop and read a story about chickens. It was absolutely, it was, it was just, it was a delightful thing. They have continued to maintain curbside service almost through the entire pandemic and opened express service for people who wish to go in. That's allowed for access to computers for people to apply for jobs and distance learning. They maintain a virtual library card program with three of our school districts so that, that children and youth have access to materials and research sites. You have heard quite a lot about the Together We Can Initiative, which has engaged communities in a different way, expanded services, and is continuing to bring in things. As we talked about the Connected Kids, we're, they're in conversation right now with Big Brothers and Big Sisters to bring in some additional mentoring services through a nonprofit to help support kids feel connected to caring adults. And certainly, our legislative, one of our legislative priorities is to support some of the data sharing that would help between agencies that are serving children. All right. So then we're going to talk about the fourth objective, private and public partnerships collaborate to develop foundations that promote economic and employment opportunities. There are three strategies in this area. The first is about expanding broadband, and I'm not going to talk at all about that. Perry did a very nice job of speaking about that earlier, and I think we'll just leave, leave that. But I do want to talk about the other two strategies, the work with Scale to increase access to employment and education, and also our work to create more sustainable, resilient system of regional infrastructure. The community indicator I think we want to pay attention to going forward is the annual unemployment rate. You know, before the pandemic, that was incredibly low, 2.8% unemployment before the pandemic hit. We continue to watch that through our work with the Minnesota Department of Employment and Education and Employment. We provide weekly unemployment statistics through our EOC report. We know that over 37% of residents in Scott County applied for unemployment at some point in 2020. As Commissioner Beard noted earlier, that isn't people that go on and stay on, like people are going on and off, but 37% of the population at one point in 2020 applied for unemployment. So it is a, it is a metric we want to keep an eye on.
Chris, I guess I would add, I think it's going to be even more important than asking you to keep an eye on this, like your first representation rate. With our unemployment numbers in Scott County, we're down by, I think, like, 24%, but we've lost tons of people from the labor force.
Yep.
We need to, for the good of all of us, we hope they get back to the labor force.
Right.
Many of our...
Thank you. Many of our businesses are really hurting for employees.
Yes.
So I, I really think that's going to be an important topic, and, and not that we get to decide that or, you know, go pull people out of their houses, but some of our policies will impact that.
Thank you, Commissioner. The other community indicator we look at in this objective around that infrastructure piece is around highways, and we certainly want safe, we want reliable highways to support economic development as well as just the mobility of our citizens. So this is a community indicator that looks at the number of crashes on roadways in Scott County compared to the metro and compared to the state. So these are not just our roadways, these are, are all roadways, but you can see the crash rates in Scott County are considerably lower than either of those other two metrics. And that really is, says something about both our highway design and our highway maintenance that makes that possible. That's the unemployment, the weekly unemployment numbers that I quoted to you earlier. That's fiber. I think this is an important metric to watch. This is performance data from our economic assistance programs. It's a three-year self-support index, and it looks at, of those people that are on a public assistance financial support program, what percentage of those folks left that program to gain full employment, defined as 30 hours of work per week and no cash assistance. The state sets two targets, a lower threshold and a higher threshold, and they do that because there's some incentive money attached to performance. And as you can see, right up, right up until March of 2020, Scott County was, was just at that higher threshold. So we went into this in a strong position, and we'll see how that looks as we go forward into 2020. This data is updated only every 20 years, and I just threw this in because it's an important piece of our scale work, and that is the percentage of people that live and work in Scott County, and we have the 50 by 30 initiative. If you look, in the first column of numbers to the left is Scott County's performance. Our goal is 50%, and in 2018, we're at 41%. That data will be updated in 2020, and we'll bring you that when we have it. This is a performance measure from our highway department, and as I said, we want our highways to be both safe and reliable. And part of reliability is looking at average speeds. Can you get, can you get from place to place without extended waits? And this looks at County Road 42 at, at specific intersections as a principal arterial corridor. We want that to be a, a road that allows for reliable, steady traffic. Oops, where are you going to say, Mark?
Mr. Chair, Chris is, I'm looking at like Glendale-Burnsville Parkway, saying 10 miles an hour? When? Or am I not reading that correctly? And in 2020, when traffic was way down.
So Commissioner, if you take a look at that, that was the 2020 projection from the original corridor study. If we didn't do anything like add capacity or improve the access.
Okay.
So we're marking the 2020 wasn't the actual data, but that was what the projections were that we're marking against moving forward, why we needed to make improvements.
I think I understand what you're doing. I don't see the key on what the candy stripe thing, the candy...
I think it's just missing on there.
Okay.
The study also predicted 2020 travel speed. So this goes back to the study you participated in back in 1999, 2000, 2001. And so the actual work was done not in 90... And so the actual work was done not in ninety-six, but in ninety-nine, and it projected what 2020 speeds would be if we didn't make any of those improvements moving forward. We then continued in ninety-six, we actually did drive-throughs, fifteen, nineteen highways, continuing to monitor that to make sure that we kind of target that forty mile per hour speed and don't get too far out of--
Yeah.
--alignment with it. So the indication is actually good that the improvements we've been doing, when you take a look at those between seventeen and eighty-three and eighty-three and twenty-one, we have kept right at that forty, and we haven't fallen below where we would have been if those improvements hadn't been made from the modeling back then.
Remind me where trunk highway thirteen and twenty-seven come together.
By the library. In Savage.
Where what comes together, Commissioner?
Thirteen and twenty-seven. They never touch.
No, it's from thirteen to twenty-seven, right?
From thirteen, okay. I thought these were intersections were--
No, these are the segments of roads. So from like Glendale to the Burnsville Parkway in Dakota, that's heavily, heavily weighted in Dakota even more so than--
Forty-two. This is on forty-two. Okay, I'm sorry, that's, I should read the whole thing before I ask the question. It's right there in bold type, right across the top, I see now. Thank you, colleagues.
Oops. All right. And the last performance item we're going to look at in this, or this objective is from our transit program, and this looks at the percentage of rides that were requested but denied through SmartLink. So as you can see, our denial rate is lower than the threshold that is set by our folks and by Matt Council. This has been an area that we have done some work as part of the strategic plan. There was a plan to update the Unified Transit Plan, and that work has gone forward, and there are some final drafts, I think, that are being circulated for review at this time. So we've seen some progress in that area as well. Brad?
All right. Well, 2020, we saw a lot of progress on, on this objective, and I want to spotlight a few of them. One, you've got a full briefing just previously from Perry, and that was the investments that have been made to expand broadband access. I think that was a really important project for a variety of reasons, but economic development is right up there. I know a lot of home-based businesses that we interact with at our office have been thankful for some of that additional speed that's been provided. Notably, we've been publicizing this project and a lot of the projects we've been talking about here this hour in the both scene and residence report, and the residence report will be going out into hitting mailboxes probably here in a couple of weeks. And we're spotlighting this project and a lot of different projects that we've accomplished in 2020. We had to get innovative in 2020, given the circumstances, and to support people returning to work, a lot of that support went virtual, and you can see here some of the, the different things that were done for career fairs, employer panels, presentations, really trying to train people in a different way and get them back into the labor force. There was also work done in 2020 to develop a, a community website, and folks through scale and live, learn, earn were instrumental in getting that website going that would link housing, education, employment opportunities, and transportation. And I think if you sit on different live, learn, earn work teams, you've seen some early look at that website. The, the goal is to launch it here in 2021. If you drive around the county, you know full well the major highway projects that were completed in 2020. Four major projects, the one sixty-nine, forty-one, and seventy-eight, of course, was the really big project and is going to change the travel patterns and I think the development patterns in that part of the county for years to come. Couple of important roundabouts, certainly the one in downtown Prairie Lake, also one down in Elkhorn New Market, the two and ninety-one roundabout, and the forty-two expansion. Again, these are projects that are highlighted in the residence report and a lot of our scene articles. The Unified Transit Management Plan, work began in 2020. That's another plan that will be hitting the final stages here in 21, looking at the long-range vision for transit, not only in our growing northern cities, but also important how we're going to provide transit to the cities on the, in the southern part of the county. And a real strong link to, to the housing blueprint. I didn't highlight that enough when I talked about the blueprint, but I think there's a growing recognition that we need to plan transit and housing a lot more close together and thinking about where's transit going to be provided, and then what housing do we provide next to those transit routes? What makes sense to start moving people more efficiently to jobs or shopping or different destinations? Another resilient communities project that, that we launched a couple of years ago is looking at what is our forecasted growth for household hazardous waste? Do we need to think about this more broadly, not just the county, but kind of region-wide? Where do we need to go? And we were fortunate enough to, to work with Dakota County to get some bonding appropriation money to look at a new regional facility that can serve residents in both Scott and Dakota County, and much more work on that now will begin in 21.
All right. Then our last objective is performance, to identify and implement changes to service delivery leading to improved outcomes. There are four strategies here to design and implement business model changes that improve service delivery, to evaluate our internal operations based on our 2040 comp plan, and looking at if we have systems that continue to support a complex organization, broadening community participation and community engagement in our planning, decision-making, and implementation, and that we recruit, retain, and support a high-quality culturally-informed workforce. So there's three community indicators that we're going to look at related to this objective. The first is what is sort of commonly referred to here as the cost of government, and this looks at what do citizens pay from all, all entities that assess property tax against their personal income? So really, what is the cost of government to individual residents? This is the Scott County voter turnout rate. This is a, a commonly used marker of community engagement, how engaged are residents in their communities if they vote. Scott County has historically had a very high rate of voter turnout. A ninety-four percent of voters, registered voters voted in 2020 compared to a state rate of just, just shy of eighty percent. This was, as you know, kind of a big lift for the folks in our, our Elections Department. This year was a complicated election, it was a big election. Fifty-two-point-eight percent of the votes that were cast here were cast through an absentee ballot process. That's the largest in our history. And we were challenged because many of the people who typically volunteer in our election sites are retired folks who fell into that high-risk category for COVID. And so it required some staffing changes by our staff, the use of some temps, and along the way, we learned some things about adaptations and conveniences for our residents that are likely to continue after COVID. So we're actually hoping to have some folks talk about that later this year at a Scott This, I think, is an important slide, is citizens rating and the value of taxes paid. It comes from our resident survey, which again was last issued in 2019, but we certainly want to know every time we issue that survey, are residents feeling like they're getting value for the taxes that they pay? This is one of our key performance items, and it looks at what do residents think about the job we do listening to them? Like to see that trending up. This is the data on the job that residents reflect, the job they think we are doing, informing them of what is going on. Also like to see those numbers going up. And this is residents' impression of our employees, looking at whether, at how courteous, responsive, and knowledgeable they are. And again, we see high rates from our residents in, when they interact with our staff, which is, is very encouraging.
So again, this objective was all about performance, and how do we change business models to improve service delivery? And boy, there was no other objective that we moved a lot of different pieces this past year, given the circumstances, really moving most, or a large portion of our workforce into a remote working environment, providing mobile devices to all staff, increasing our internal IT security features, making sure that we have a good, sound, and secure system, moving a lot of our interaction together and with our residents and clients in a virtual format, those meeting platforms, virtual courts, new ways for people to interact with the county and get an appointment. And, you know, a lot of these things are going to stick, even, I think, post-pandemic. We've discovered new ways of providing service that's more efficient, frankly, probably even more, probably in a way that our, our residents, like even veterans, instead of having to wait in a line downstairs for an hour, maybe it would be better to get a text saying it's ready to, we're ready to see you now, and you can come inside. So I think we're going to see a real sea change in how we're providing some of our different services. HHI, Social Human Services, really moving more and more to annoying paperless, following, leading some of our other divisions and departments in implementing electronic document system, really taking a look from top to bottom on the different processes and procedures in our jail and really trying to kind of map out some efficiencies improvements that we can look at in our jail operations. Obviously, building Government Center West is a huge undertaking and, and accomplishment that will be celebrated here in a few months. We can open that up in March, move a lot of our departments into that new space. Again, that too, I'm sure will create new ways of doing business, new ways of interacting together with our customers and residents. Internally, there's some alignment that occurred, libraries, historical society, and extension, and that alignment will likely find new ways of, of supporting all three of those different efforts. We started drafting a community engagement charter, and I know that will be a topic of a workshop after your meeting. The elections of 2020 was entirely different, and a lot of learning was coming out of that and kind of thinking about new ways of providing elections, but our staff did a remarkable job, having very successful elections here in Scott County. I think you're going to hear more and more in 2021 about priority-based budgeting, that's PBB. How do we really link the different investments that you make at your level? How do we tie them to real outcomes for our residents? More to come on that, but it's going to be looking at a lot of data that we presented here today and trying to link that back with actual investments in our, in our operating budgets and our capital improvement plans. And then some of the training that we undertook at the senior leadership level and here at the board level with Picada, he's introducing us into kind of new ways of thinking about how we interact with our diverse set of residents. Couple of other projects just to highlight, again, coming out of the Resilient Communities Project that I want to celebrate because they really did advance here in 2020, and that is extending access to our libraries, this idea that people could enter our library space even if there's no staff there after hours, having some ability with a card or likely a card to be able to access the library, check out some material. Jordan is the pilot for that, and the vendor has installed the equipment and the West fulfillment, and we were going to launch that back in March, but now the word is we're going to start that up again here in 2021 and get that kind of project moving along. Another project that some students did that looked at is the different ways of doing property assessments, the days of not going indoors and trying to walk around the house might be coming to an end with all of our technology, being able to see different properties from the air. And some of that work, I think you'll hear from Michael Thompson say that that already again, Florence, Department of Revenue's guidance on how assessments can be done. And so I think that's really positive to point out. That is good. I will turn it back over to Chris, I think, for some final comments.
Yes. So just in closing, I just wanted to remind you or, or let you know, when we created that, we finalized the strategic plan a year ago, we talked about a plan for quarterly reporting so that if you wanted to know about the status of our, of our work, that you would have more timely data and information available. And that was a piece that we did put on hold because of COVID. We just had, had our leadership team doing so many other things. We are prepared to start that now, and so those quarterly reports will start as of the summer of this year, those start to be available to you on a quarterly basis. And those are going to be available through administrative room millions, so if you have questions, comments, you can certainly check in on the status of these projects as we go forward. So with that, we thank you very much. We know you've had a busy morning, and we appreciate your comments and your questions. Do you have others? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that presentation. I was muted this time. Anyhow, very good. Thank you for all your work, and I guess we have no questions on that, no comments. We're going to go on to Commissioner Reports and Updates, and we'll start with Commissioner Breck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our last board meeting was January nineteenth. After our board meeting, we did have a workshop to talk about several issues. On January twentieth, I attended the Scott County Law Library Quarterly Board Meeting and, and heard a report on the Law Library activities. Most notable is the Law Library has been really providing a great resource for litigants or people who have court hearings via Zoom when they don't have access to Zoom. So she has stations set up, people come in, they're, they're able to get help connecting, and, and from judges, the judge's standpoint seems to be very valuable to have that resource because otherwise it seems that people are trying to do hearings on phones, which isn't, doesn't go so well. On January twenty-first, I met with Tracy about our new agenda software. Later that day, I had the MELSA Board Meeting, our regional library system, just because of rotations and alphabetical nature of the counties. I am vice chair this year of that board and chaired the Personnel Committee, so I have a few more responsibilities to deal with, with MELSA. Later, also on January twenty-first, I attended virtually the MICA Annual Meeting, and then later that evening, we had the monthly Scott County Library Board Meeting. On January twenty-second, I participated in a committee comprised of folks from, from AMC and Maxa and, I can't think of the other one right now. What's our other organization? MICA, there we go. Thank you. I just said it a moment ago. Looking at, at human services redesign and, and working with DHS to really put some of our learnings through COVID into permanent place, to really look at our relationship with the state and, and what things the state should be doing versus the counties. That group has decided to, some of the counties have contributed funds to hire a consultant to move this along because I think most of our counties, most of our colleagues thinks this is important enough that they're willing to kick in some money and, and try again or continue to try to work on that relationship, work on those systems, and make sure that the state's doing their part and not putting up roadblocks and barriers for us. On January twenty-fifth, had the Minnesota Alliance for Healthy Families Board Meeting. Again, that's our consolidation with ten other counties in one of our home visiting programs, provides funds for us to do our, our family home visiting. January twenty-sixth, I had a meeting with Leslie, Commissioner Beer, and some representatives from the Prairie Lake, Spring Lake, Watershed District, just talking about coordination, cooperation, and, and opportunities for efficiency. After that, had the Scott County Mental Health Local Advisory Council. Sheriff Luke Kennan's now the chair this year of that Advisory Council, so our, our Chair, John Stadler, had been in place for many years, and, and he moved out of the county, and Luke won that very contested election, so congratulations to him. And then I had the Live, Learn, Earn Educational Preparedness Committee that evening. January twenty-eighth, I attended the Shakopee Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting. It was a virtual meeting and really just highlights of what's happened the year, this year, Tim Zung-- Tim Zunker is interim president. Uh, they're just continuing to, um, go forward. Uh, have a lot of things going on, helping businesses, um, take advantage of different grant programs and opportunities. Um, looking at legislation, uh, I, I think, you know, Angie is very great, but she's, she's set things up in a way that that chamber is going to remain strong and very visible and important in our community. And then finally, on January twenty ninth, attended the Minnesota Attorney General's Listening Session on, um, the opiate, opiate crisis and, and where if there's some settlement money that's coming through to counties, kind of the priorities for that settlement money. They're doing several of those. So we were on with just a couple of other counties, Stearns and, um, just a, a few counties. And, and then some staff from the Attorney General's Office, um, staff from AMC and, uh, MICA also. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the nineteenth, Prairie Lake City had their, uh, twice monthly meeting. They talked about some perks and improvements there. On the twenty fifth, uh, met with, uh, our administrator, talk about a few projects and a few items coming up. And, uh, also that, uh, evening, uh, the W M O, the Watershed Management Organization met. And, uh, they're, went through the projects that they're going to be, uh, having this, uh, this year and things start melting. Twenty sixth, I had, uh, the, met with some staff about, uh, Zooms and some of the county, uh, website stuff that's changing. On the twenty seventh, the Metropolitan Mosquito Control, um, I haven't been bit for ninety days, so it's pretty good. We're killing them all. Then on the twenty eighth, the Vermillion, uh, River Joint Powers met. On the, uh, that evening, Elk and Market had their, uh, twice monthly meeting. Uh, the big talk is, uh, the Quick Trip that's planning on going out there on ninety one in France. That according to a lot of residents can't come soon enough. It'd be a very welcome addition out there. Uh, the twenty ninth, I met with a constituent that, um, thinks he's paying too much on taxes. So, uh, I'm going to. Aren't we all? But, um, to, so I'm going to talk to Michael Thompson and see, uh, what, uh, if he can look at that property. On the first of February, uh, Prairie Lake City, last night, they, uh, talked about affordable housing in their workshop and, uh, how that can work and whatever. So then Credit River, they had their, uh, monthly meeting. And on Friday, as was mentioned, uh, maybe once or twice here, they are, uh, got the go ahead, they are now a city. And so now we have, uh, eight cities again here in Scott County that was on the twenty ninth. So, uh, I told people happy birthday Credit River, gave birth to a six mile by four mile baby and, uh, six hundred and thirty-two trillion tons. So, and then Cedar Lake Township had their monthly meeting after that and, uh, nice and, uh, it's quiet out there. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Beard.
Well, colleagues, um, on the twenty first, I flew home from other places. And I was, uh, in time to catch the tail end of the MICA Annual Meeting, which was a virtual meeting this year. Uh, that evening, the one sixty-nine Quarter Coalition had its annual membership meeting. And, uh, Commissioner Olmec, I think we had almost forty people attend, if I'm not mistaken. That was, it was rather well attended for a Zoom event. Um, of course, it's pretty easy to, to pop in when you're sitting at home and you're in comfort area at home, I guess. On the, um, Friday, the twenty second, the Transportation Alliance Board of Directors Meeting, talk about the, um, upcoming release of the governor's budget. Uh, on Monday, the twenty fifth, um, nothing on the, on the, uh, twenty sixth. Uh, the, um, CAP Agency Finance Committee had a meeting. Um, they're, uh, I, again, I can't stress how pleased I am at the new CFO out there and what a wonderful job she's done in the year and a half she's been there. Uh, putting together reports, uh, getting the audit done on time, the forms nine ninety filed in a timely fashion. Uh, and having, uh, finance reports that even this commissioner can read. And I'm not skilled at reading government finance reports as much as some are, but she's done a remarkable job of clarifying and simplifying things. CAP Agency is in pretty good shape. Let me just report that to you. Uh, that evening, the Scale Unified Transit Management Plan Meeting, we discussed a couple more chapters of that proposal. Excuse me. Uh, I should say on the morning of twenty sixth, we did have the Chair Vice Chair Meeting. Uh, because we had such a thorough briefing that morning, the next morning, my monthly meeting with Commissioner or with, um, Administrator Vermillion, we decided to forego that. I did, uh, replace it with coffee and breakfast, actually. Uh, glad to be back on the breakfast, uh, routine up at, uh, Perkins, uh, now known as Ruby's with one of my, uh, Shakopee School Board, uh, members and talk about some issues of mutual concern there. Uh, lunchtime, a Zoom meeting with the Minnesota Legis- Legislature Society. Thursday morning, had breakfast with, uh, Senator Preck and Representative Albright concerning, uh, Lake McMahon issues and how we might proceed. And of course, a couple of our staff members joined us for that, Claire and Perry. On, uh, Friday, the, uh, uh, Transportation Alliance had its, uh, meeting, uh, set up the meeting with regional summits around the state. And, um, again, uh, uh, an interesting situation has developed because Transportation Alliance is always asking for more money for transportation, more money for transportation. And they were counting on the governor, excuse me just a moment. More coffee, I guess. The governor was, uh, had been giving hints all year. He was going to have a mega honking transportation proposal to release in his budget last Wednesday, Tuesday. And his transportation budget is steady as she goes. No tax increases, no big initiatives. Uh, of course, not going to remind everybody, it doesn't mean we don't have any money because we're still spending over six billion dollars, yeah, in to buy any of them on transportation. But now the Transportation Alliance is having internal discussions about what then do we do because they were prepared to travel around the state. Lobbying for a gas tax increase and a few other things, and the governor doesn't want that. So, um, urge, uh, we're having that discussion. Uh, that Monday morning, the first, uh, yesterday, we had our one sixty-nine Quarter Coalition Legislative Open House. And we had many legislators attend and a couple senators, uh. Uh, later that afternoon, Representative Brian Farr from La Sure, who couldn't make it in the morning, uh, had a little, uh, one-on-one time with Representative Farr, talking about one sixty-nine issues. And I think, uh, Mr. Chair, that is the, uh, extent of my report.
Mr. Chair, could I ask Commissioner Beard a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Beard, at, and I know that, uh, the one sixty-nine Quarter Co- Coalition issues have been broader in scope. But since our open house on the, um, Bluff, Sand Creek area plans, I've, we've, I think we all have. But I've been getting more emails too from business folks there who have concerns. Have there been more talks about that in that group?
Uh, the presentations we made amongst ourselves, um, uh, at the annual meeting, um, were more along the lines of here's, here's what we've tried, set out to do, here's what we've accomplished, here's where we hope to go. And these are the current hot projects, which include the Sand Creek, uh, industrial area there and the two eighty-two, uh, crossing. Uh, there was just talk about how important it is to get that done, especially with the lights coming out at forty-one. A lot of self-congratulation on how well the forty-one project came together. Uh, but no, there was, uh, other than the usual recognition of the issues that are there, and they're serious issues. Uh, no, nothing further. It did come up too with the legislators, some of the same comments were made that, uh, sooner would be better than later on making progress at, uh, in the Sand Creek area, even before two eighty-two if we need to. Because that is a right now problem and it's a major safety issue developing.
Great. Thank you for that.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, just to add a reminder that we do have the project for that overpass that blocked with the frontage roads. Um, for twenty twenty-two, Commissioner Beard. So to your point, trying to advance that even ahead of the signal. Um, and utilizing some of those, um, sales tax funds and then leveraging some money with those. You know, working with Mindot and Sand Creek, who I think did a really tremendous job leading that study, um, and stepping up and, and driving um, where they wanted to go as a community. So those funds are in there and, um, we are actively working with them. Um, and working through that process with the township.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Uh, Commissioner Beard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the twentieth, I had a post-secondary, uh, virtual meeting with the Live, Learn, Earn. And mostly that was, uh, dealing with Shakopee and their incubator, um, which I believe is, I'm looking at Leslie, I don't know with that grant. I know they've been denied twice, maybe three times. But this meeting was really kind of focused on, um, Darren was one of the presenters with the Intermediate District and their new building and what might exist there. And, uh, he's, uh, running himself ragged, um, you know, trying to fill that space, which is awesome. Um, good collaboration there. Twenty first, dialed into the MICA, uh, Annual Meeting, as was mentioned. Um, point of interest there, I was intrigued by Commissioner Schnell's, um, lead, uh, PowerPoint or whatever it was, was transforming lives. Um, you know, words matter, transformation's a big deal. We don't want to keep paying for these things generation after generation. So now we'll see what that looks like and how that actually, uh, comes to bear. But words matter and if, if that signals a shift, I don't know. But it was intriguing for me at, at any rate. On the twenty fifth, Prairie Lake Spring Lake Watershed had a special meeting focused on projects. As we remember in the, I think it was two thousand fourteen, Prairie overflowed its banks. And one of the projects, um, that has been talked about since then is how do we slow that water down before it hits Spring Lake, before it flows into Prairie Lake? So, um, Sutton Lake has kind of been, uh, the area earmarked to try to slow some of that water down. And that project is, uh, I think going to be, certainly make some dents in the ground here sooner than later. But there's also followed up, they're really project driven. The watershed is very project driven. Um, now perhaps more so than ever. So really focused on making the dollar pay and getting the shovels in the dirt. So Sutton Lake's going to be a big deal because with weather, it's above my pay grade, climate shift, climate change, whatever. Uh, but trying to slow that water down is a big, big deal. Um, and the twenty sixth, also, uh, was mentioned a Prairie Lake Spring Lake conference call with the President of the, um, Watershed and Commissioner Weckman, Breck, Brecky and, and Leslie, just having conversations, what if, asking fun questions. Um, um, so I'll leave it at that for now. Twenty seventh, um, Scott County Prevention Coalition had a Zoom meeting, um, focused to some extent on vaping and flavors and, and what Prairie Lake is, if you maybe aren't aware, Prairie Lake is going to host a hearing. I believe it's February sixteenth in the evening about the potential for Prairie Lake to say no. No flavored vapes in the city limits. Um, and so that is open for public comment on the sixteenth of February. So stay tuned to that. Um, also at the twenty second, sorry, at a, uh, impromptu breakfast meeting with the mayor of Prairie Lake and a, and a counselor. I was really hungry for a really good omelet with a couple vats of salsa and they happened to be there. Um, so it really worked out well. But we had a, I don't know, three, four hour meeting with the business owner, just like hearing from them firsthand, like what, hey, what's your backstory? What's, you know, how'd you get here? What's your story and what have you been going through? So to look somebody in the eyes, as we've all been doing over the last year, and to, uh, jump into some other people's shoes. While having some really awesome, uh, omelets and salsa, it was a great, it was a great time just to reconnect with our, our friends in Prairie Lake and business owners as well. With that, um, that will conclude my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. On the twentieth, I attended the Transportation Advisory Board. Later that same day, the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority Board. Uh, I'll say, uh, about M V T A, there's been lots of, um, emails and back and forth, um, lobbying with Dakota County, who had notified M V T A that they were going to withdraw, uh, that Dakota County was going to draw, withdraw from the M V T A Board. Uh, apparently, I, I don't know how you can have this thinking, but they, they consider M V T A to be a vendor alongside Lyft and Uber. And I guess they even consider Metro Transit a, a, a vendor. I, I guess when I think of a vendor, I, I think of a private entity with stockholders that are accountable to, you know, I mean, a, a, organization that's accountable to stockholders and, and, uh, a for-profit operation, that, that's a vendor. You know, M V T A is a public board, it's a government joint powers agreement and it's funded by M Best Tax. And, and that before that was a property tax and I don't know how they considered it to be a, a vendor and withdrew. Even, even, um, people that are served by M V T A, their communities, um, voted against staying, uh, you know, voted for removal from the board. You know, Liz Workman was strongly against staying on the board of M V T A, which is really shocking to me, surprising. And I, I don't get it. Um, you know, here in Scott County, if, if we were to think that M V T A was a vendor, we probably still stand the board just in collaboration with all the cities. Just, you know, I don't know how they did that, but they did. They just voted this morning at their board meeting that's running the same time as ours to, to withdraw. So that's disappointing. Twenty first, I had a meeting, uh, with the City Administrator and Mayor of Savage, or kind of our every other month meeting. Twenty fifth, the S T A Legislative Breakfast. And their priorities are two, I just want to go over these. The S T A priorities are, are just to be, one, are to be recognized as a, a vital model for transit in the region. In this COVID environment, when funding is, when trend, ridership is lower, you know, they're, they're worried that they might try and squeeze them out. Eliminate S T A, but to want to just maintain the vitality, uh, and support of S T A. Maintain the existing funding models as the economy stabilizes from the pandemic. And, um, they feel that obviously the future funding should be equitable. It hasn't been in the past. The Ramvest, the, the regional motor vehicle sales tax has really been divided strongly and unfairly in, uh, Metro Transit's favor and, and not really distributed equitably to, to, uh, the S T A providers, including Minnesota Valley Transit Authority. Um, they want to maintain their operating area and clarify, clarify the legislative intent with the enabling legislation, uh, over the pa- in the past, uh, Metro Transit and Met Council have leapfrogged. Uh, M V T A, you know, and to serve Lakeville. And now they've, they've taken over the red line that's functioning as a local service that is right in the heart of M V T A's area. So they want to have their integrity maintained. And they want to have flexibility to, to run their own operations. I remember during our Lynn McCarthy days, she would even comment on the kind of tile that would be in a parking garage ba- bathroom, you know. I mean, they really are intrusive and they, they should give a little more autonomy, uh, to the operations of, of the providers. And then, uh, this is a head nod to our government's governance work. They want to continue exploring more equitable M P O oversight. Metropolitan Planning Organization Oversight. So that's their priorities. Um, and that was a very good, well-attended breakfast. Then later that day, I had a meeting with the Scale Service Delivery Committee and we talked about the Mobile Field Force. And this, this is something we need to have a workshop on. You know, what is the Mobile Field Force? What are the goals? It's, it's a, it's an important, uh, topic and, and I hope we get that on our agenda soon. But there was a big, uh, debate about the governance of this effort. And, uh, the law enforcement were proposing that it would be all governed by all the sheriffs. And there'd be a couple of administrators here or there, you know, and so it would be heavily dominated, basically run by, uh, law enforcement. And I, I, I vigorously debated that and said, I actually think the law enforcement should be more like a technical advisory group. And, and there should be a board that, and law enforcement doesn't vote. They put, they give proposals, budget, presentations and operation stuff to, to the, the, uh, electeds and administrators that would sit on this board. And, uh, we, obviously that board wouldn't get into tactical things or day-to-day operations of the field force, but they would guide it. And, and, um, so the question really was quite, um, aggressive on, on how it's going to be governed. A person like, uh, uh, Mayor, our Administrator Reynolds from Shakopee, you know, was, said something. Well, we don't ever want to, like, uh, the military or, or the National Guard to, to give us excess heavy equipment. You know, military equipment. We don't want to ever see our police force militarized. And he, he said, well, if we ever have anything like that, we would want our city council to weigh in whether to accept it or not. And I said, well, actually, if you fix the governance model upfront, you'd never have to come to the city council because elected body would be making the decisions right up front on the kind of things you'd accept or do and so forth. So this is a big thing to debate. There, there's going to be a joint powers agreement that's going to come around and ask Russ to sign and so forth. So we need to be as a whole board up to, up to speed on this, what this means. Uh, on the twenty sixth, Chair Vice Chair, um, twenty, later that day, the Unified Transit Management. On the 26th, Chair Vice Chair, later that day, the Unified Transit Management Plan. Then on the 1st, the 169 Corridor Coalition Legislative Open House. It's usually, these meetings are usually breakfasts. And, you know, it's kind of the diet plan, I guess, because there's no, there's no virtual bacon or it's just virtual bacon. We didn't really have breakfast. So anyhow, we talked about our priorities, which obviously we mentioned the Jordan Area Freight Mobility Project, you know, the 169, 282, and 9, and the Sand Creek Township improvements were talked about and how the Sand Creek project is going to occur before the other project. Bloomington Ferry Bridge, we want to move towards seeing if we can get that restriped permanently. That's going to be a fight with federal highway, but it's important. It's worth it to try and get some movement on that. Ports of Savage talked about projects down there and then also the mobility study. And we did highlight pretty strongly that, let's say you didn't really favor BRT or VinPass on 169. Well, there's a reason, you still ought to support the study and still ought to support that potential effort because it's probably the only way we're ever going to get a third lane on 169. And what actually the study has done is that as projects need to be done, they're being built to a future standard, not just rebuilding as is or as was. There was a project called Nine Mile Creek Project on 169, pretty long extensive project that shut down 169 for a while. You were aware of that. Well, that project was going to be rebuilt just as was until they looked at the study and said, no, no, we should build it for potential additional lane. And so along, over time, as we go along, the projects will be built with that in mind, to have future larger capacity. We did a redo of that Corridor Coalition Meeting for Representative Farr later that day because he wasn't able to make the morning meeting. And then we had a SmartLink Mobility Management Board Meeting later that day. That's the end of my report. Round the county administrator update. Somebody have a question?
Mr. Chair, I just have an addition. I forgot. Yesterday, February 1st, I had a meeting with Jeff Hansen, CEO of the CAP Agency. Commissioner Beard reminded me of that. So I talked to him about a couple of things as CAP is hoping to do some more with senior dining in our rural areas and more senior nutrition. And also, we talked a little bit about one of the subjects of our workshop, the potential grant from the Sauer Family Foundation and his thoughts about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Say, if you want to get a gold star with JJ, here's what you do. You put your reported writing and email to her. I started doing that a year ago, simply to help me with mileage. Now my report has no mileage in it because we don't drive anywhere. These are virtual meetings. But it really helps her a lot. If you want to do that, you get a gold star with her. I'm kidding, sort of. Okay, county administrator update.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple items. Administrator Selvig and Freeze both went and toured one of the homes on Marshall Road with one of the potential vendors just to take a look at it and understand if it was usable and how that would take a look. So they're going to begin working through that process then as well with the community that we'll have to go through. Tomorrow, Claire and Perry and I are meeting with Senator Dram on a couple of issues and things that he has at the legislature. So looking forward to that discussion. We did submit a video to the Shakopee Academies regarding the job fair and we continue to participate with them. I believe we have three interns for sure. We have one out in Highway for the first time, one in the county surveyor's office and one in the quality improvement area. And I want to commend all of those managers for doing that in this remote time and taking that on and trying to work with the academies and providing those kids a really, really good experience. And then finally, as soon as we're done here and before we start the workshop, there is some lunch, you know, next door there for you to take a little break, grab, and then come back for the work session. So that's the end of my report.
Clarification, will you be delivering any lunch to me? That's a joke. Sorry. Onward. Item nine, recess for attorney-client meeting.
Mr. Chair, we do not need to recess.
Okay. Item 10 would be a motion adjourned. But again, before we do that, just to highlight, we are going to a workshop setting that's been mentioned. It's going to be a discussion about our Community Engagement Charter and then the Sauer Family Foundation Grant, Family Resource Centers. That's the topics of our workshop. So that's where we're going to be next, but we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. AJ can take the roll.
Commissioner Wakeman-Brecky? Aye. Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Beard?
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich?
Aye. Thank you. We're adjourned.